To tonight's Monroe City Council meeting, this is the regular study session for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff, please read the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough. And for the record, Councilmember Gamble is attending remotely.
All right, thank you. And all right, great. Councilmember Foulter, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I know that we do have a couple of people who've signed up to speak this evening. Is that correct, Miss Wykoff? Perfect. So I'll go ahead and I'll read the script this evening. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a limited opportunity for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. Person to the rules of procedure, oral public comment is limited to in-person comment only and must comply with the standards set forth in the council rules. Comments are limited to three minutes. Information on where to send written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We will now begin public comment. I'm going to go ahead and call on Elaine O'Bank. Did I get your name right? Okay, great. Thank you. Please come forward and for the record, please state your name and area of residence or association with the city. And then we'll start the timer.
Elaine O'Bank. I work at Monroe Christian School. I live in Monroe County. So I'm the administrator of Monroe Christian School, and we were hoping to rent space from New Hope Fellowship for our preschool. We want to continue to provide preschool to our area, but it's a value, we feel like it's a valuable resource, but we're unable to find places to rent in town due to zoning. So we're just here to let you know that it's a concern of ours and a desire of ours to continue to offer this to our, to our town. And we thank you for the time and attention that you'll be spending trying to help us work this problem out. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine, we do have a staff member here with our planning department. She can give you her card and can connect with you on just zoning requirements as well as maybe some of our economic development specialists. So if you haven't spoken with her yet, would you be able to get the information? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next person who I have who has signed up to speak is Representative, Councilmember Low.
Sam Low Lake Stevens, State Rep. in the 39th at Snohomish County Council, District Five. It's Fair Week. It's good to see everybody here, and I hope you come out to the fair, to the county fair this coming week. I did want to thank the city for putting together the 522 trip that we took this evening. I think it was very well received by our staff at the state and also by the other representative and senator that was there. I think it's important that we continue to highlight 522 for this community, and hopefully we'll get some good progress on that. And also at the county, we're working on the comp plan. I want to thank the mayor for coming out last night, Councilmember Foulter, and Councilmember Walker for coming out to give testimony on that. I have put forward the request for Monroe Two, which was a council, city council priority. The county council several years ago put forward the Roosevelt area to study. It doesn't look like there's going to be any proposal for that. I know several of you testified in opposition to that. It doesn't look like that that's probably going to be moving forward. So just want to give an update on that and just enjoy representing Monroe at the county council and feel free to reach out if you have any questions or anything I can do to help you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam. Is there anybody else who hasn't signed up that would like to come forward to speak? Senator Leas?
Thank you so much, Marco Leas. I'm a state senator from Edmonds and proud to chair our Senate Transportation Committee. I'm out of practice from my city council days. I forgot to sign in on the sheet, so I appreciate your patience. I just want to echo what Representative Low shared. You know, your staff together with the school district and your public safety officials put on a great tour today. We were able to have Representative Gainer as well as Representative Low join us and some of our staff. And because the mayor and I both are on swing shift as elected officials, we got to take the tour at four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon. So everybody got to see 522 at its glorious worst position possible. So I think it was really impactful for folks to see that. And your, your school district folks reminding us of kids losing valuable time in the classroom because they're stuck in traffic. It was really startling. Your fire district sharing that there's nearly five times as many collisions on that stretch than there are further south. So longer, busier stretch has fewer accidents, five times fewer than the shorter stretch. So I thought that was really powerful. And, you know, your staff just did an excellent job of walking us through sort of the vision here. I will say, you know, in the 2022 legislature, the state invested in the planning and design of these improvements, and we did that on purpose so that this project would be ready to go when we make further transportation investments. And Representative Low and I have talked about kind of what do, how do we craft a package for all of Snohomish County? I live in Edmonds, so replacing that seismically unfit trestle is really important to my constituents and to the aerospace industry here. We also have light rail coming to my community, and we want to make sure that folks can safely access that. So how do we craft a set of investments that help all of our communities move forward? We're all in this together. We all need infrastructure that serves all of us, so we're going to continue to do that. And then just, I also wanted to flag my appreciation for the work you're doing with your new therapeutic court facility. You know, throughout the county, we see our friends and neighbors struggling with behavioral health, with addiction challenges. And I think it takes an all of the above approach to get folks the help and support they need. And sometimes in West County, we don't salute the great work you guys are doing in other parts of the county. So I just appreciate you guys taking the time and effort to make sure that here in the Sky Valley, your neighbors have a variety of tools and opportunities to get their lives back on track. And I was proud to vote for a budget that invested some dollars in it, and I hope that we can be partners on all of that moving forward, too. So thanks for everything. So good to be with you. And from a former Muckel TO City Council member, I appreciate the work you're going to do tonight and here in the weeks to come, so keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Anybody else like to speak this evening? I'm just going to just take a real quick point of privilege because I know that the senator and representative may not want to stay for the entire meeting. I'll share a little bit more during the mayor's report out just on how it went. But I am going to take a moment, though, to thank both of you and also Representative Gainer for coming and also Director, Director Molly, Director Barnes. Sorry. We're talking about how I have a hard time with names and I have to go like this to remember people I know very well. And, but I really appreciated the three plus four of you for coming. Molly did a really good job. We're going to get rid of titles right now. Molly did a very, very good job of explaining the impacts to the school district. And so thank you very much for doing that. But, and also for the staff that came out. They had nonpartisan staff here. It wasn't just their legislative aides, but it was their nonpartisan staff that are, that came out and, you know, they live down in the South Sound and everything. So, you know, from, from our hearts to yours, thank you very much for coming this evening and making this a priority. All right. Again, no further comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be on page two. Auditor exit conference for 2023. And Administrator Knight?
Thank you. And I believe that we have our audit team that will be joining us and walking the council through the audit exit conference.
Hello, everyone.
Are you guys able to hear us okay? Oh, perfect. Okay.
I think the volume's turned up a little high here in the, in the conference. So you're coming through 30 out of 20.
Oh, okay. I'll try to be a little quieter then, so we'll see.
We'll make some adjustments here if we need to, but please go ahead.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was a little quiet on my end at first. I, I think I heard the introductions in there. But yeah, we'll go ahead and get started. And just thank you so much for allowing us to come and present at your meeting here tonight. My name is Kirk Gadboy, and I served as the audit supervisor of the city's audit this year. It's my privilege to be back again and working with city in Monroe. I think it's been a couple of years since I was last out there, and I think it's my third or fourth time back kind of supervising the city's audit. With me today is my coworker, Christos. And Christos is really the one who did the majority of the work and dug through all the paperwork and asked all the questions and things like that. So really worked closely with your staff over the last couple, couple weeks here. But today, we're going to go ahead and present the results of the city's audit for fiscal year '23. I do have a PowerPoint, so I'll go ahead and start sharing that. But we also shared a packet earlier today. And so you should have a packet of information that's available to you. It has our draft audit report in there and really has a lot more detail in that packet just about the audit process and whatnot than what's in the PowerPoint. So if you have, if you have any questions, feel free to, you know, let me know. Or if you read the packet and have any questions later on, feel free to reach out at any time. We can definitely be here to answer those questions. So before we get started with the specific details of the audit, I did just want to talk about our office a little bit in case any of you are new and maybe not familiar with the state auditor's office, who we are, what we do. The state auditor's office is an independent organization in the state of Washington. We are represented by our independently elected state auditor, Auditor Pat McCarthy. And our office really is, our goal is to audit all governments in the state of Washington, all the way from the state itself, all the way down to every school district, every city, every county, every fire district, special purpose district that's out there, even all the way down to the Red Raspberry districts and dairy commissions. So we audit all governments in the state of Washington and with the sole purpose of obviously increasing that trust in government so the public can know that there is an independent set of eyes overlooking, you know, government operations in the state. We do provide that independent examination of all operations with the goal of, you know, obviously assuring the public that government is doing what it's supposed to be doing. But also because we do audit all government in state, sometimes we do identify some areas of efficiency and areas that public might be able to improve operations. We like to share those ideas as well with your staff as we do your audit. But with that, this year, what we did is we went through and we did two different types of audits, all at Christos kind of explained what those are for fiscal year '23. So go ahead, Christos.
Thank you, Kirk. All right. So our first audit was the financial audit, and this covered the period of January 23 to December 2023. And our report and results can be found starting on page six of the exit packet. The point of this audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the information included in the financial statements is complete, accurate, and can be relied upon to make decisions. The city is receiving a unmodified clean audit opinion over the financial, financial statements. This is the preferred result and provides assurance the financial statements are fairly stated and are materially correct. Next slide. And then professional audit standards require that we share if there are any material misstatements identified, and we are pleased to report there are no material misstatements identified during the course of the audit. And as part of our audit, we reviewed certain risks that we would like to share with you. And one such risk is that we evaluated the possibility that management may be able to circumvent certain controls. And we were happy to share that our evaluation showed no cases or possibilities where controls are circumvented. Our next audit is a single audit, and this also covered the period of January to December 2023. And the objective here is to ascertain whether the city materially corrected, or sorry, materially complied with the requirements of receiving federal funding. And we reported no significant deficiencies with internal controls, and we also identified no deficiencies that we consider material weaknesses or matters of noncompliance. Therefore, we are issuing an unmodified clean audit opinion here as well. And once again, this is the preferred opinion you want to receive and provides assurance that funds were expended in accordance with earned intended purpose and that the grant requirements were followed. And you can find the results of the single audit starting on page eight of the exit packet. The grant we selected for this year was the, was the Highway Planning and Construction Grant, and this covered roughly 75% of all federal expenditures received by the city for 2023. And this 75% gives us a, a coverage needed to satisfy federal guidelines for our audit. And as stated before, we found no deficiencies with internal controls and no material weaknesses or matters of noncompliance. And I believe those are the two audits, and that should be it. I'll pass it back to Kirk.
So, so yeah, thank you, Christos. Yeah, so a lot of, you know, big words there with like opinions and unmodified opinions and deficiencies and whatnot. Just wanted to say, just to clarify, that is all good results, very good things, very positive, no, no deficiencies, no material weaknesses. And the clean audit opinions is all what you want to see. So congratulations to your city staff, and it was a pleasure working with you all to, you know, work through all that. Just next steps here, just as we close out this audit. At the beginning of the audit, we do provide an estimate of how much we think the audit will cost. We are happy to, to say that we are within that original estimate, so no increases or anything like that. Our next review is going to be in the summer of 2025. It'll cover the same two areas for fiscal year 2024. I'll cover a financial statement and also a federal program audit as well, making sure you spent those, you know, federal funds correctly. The other area is going to include those, an accountability audit as well. We didn't do one of those for this year. We cycled to next year. So we're going to be doing a, a two-year accountability audit. That's where we look at the city's compliance with state laws, your policies and procedures, and just making sure you're safeguarding public resources. So we'll be performing that audit as well. The budget, estimated cost for that audit is in your handout so that your city can help their budget for that for the upcoming year. So next steps for our report, obviously you see the draft report in front of you right now. That's not live yet. That'll probably be posted to our website. I'm thinking probably either Monday or Thursday of next week. So we'll get that thing live and out there so the public can see it. If you'd like, you can sign up and get notifications of when these reports are released on our website. And then that way you can just kind of know before it, before it's released. One other quick thing is we do have a survey that goes out with our audit report to city staff. We have a few members who are getting a link to a survey. Feel free to fill that out. Let Christos and I know how we did. We always want to hear feedback about our services. And also know it's not a one-time use link or anything. You can share that with city staff if anyone has me and what they want to provide to us. And with that, we just wanted to say thank you so much, both to Deborah and Greg, as they were helping us out through the audit process. We know there's some staff turnover in the finance department at the city. And so really, Deborah and Greg had to answer a lot of questions and kind of go above and beyond, kind of play catch-up and, you know, have answers for our questions and things like that. So we really appreciate them taking the time to research those questions and give us the answers that, you know, and show us support for the questions we needed and stuff. So just really appreciated working with them. So with that, that's all we have for you. Any questions at all, we can answer them now, or feel free to reach out to us anytime. My manager's contact information is on the screen right here, but I'm also available throughout the year if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, we just have a thank you and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
You, too. Bye-bye. All right. We're going to get council member reports. We're going to start off with Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, I know I missed last week, so sorry I missed you. And you guys probably already talked about this, but the National Night Out was just outstanding. And I attended that and just amazed every year how it continues to get bigger and just showing the cross-functional nature, all the different clubs coming together, too. So just, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Scarborough?
Thank you. If you really wanted to see a jam up on 522, you should have come probably Saturday morning or for the, probably the last weekend of the Renaissance.
Yeah.
522 was backed up all the way to Paradise Lake Road stopped. And then the unwrap at Falls Road was backed up all the way back down to Falls Road. So when we came back later in the day, it was gone. But it was a mess. So is this, was this the last weekend of the Renaissance?
I don't know. Yes. The answer is yes. So you're saying at the intersection, at that road failed? Sorry.
No, it didn't fail. It just plugged up. So other than that, we look forward to the parade.
It just, it just wasn't paradise. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I said, we look forward to the parade Saturday and seeing everybody and see you there.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to hit the other side. Councilmember Hanford, you'll be next.
Thank you, Mayor. On the weekends, I've seen the cricket players and said hi and everything. And then Saturday happened to pop, pop into Pizano's and they had like a team there and they, of course, recognized me from, and like, oh, hi. And so friendly and thanking me again for what wonderful facilities we have in the city. So it was very heartwarming.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Foulter?
I'm continuing on the theme of the Renaissance Fair. Word to the wise, don't just show up and expect to get in. I was thinking I would, but I was wrong. I was among the, I was not, did not make it among the 12 and a half thousand people who entered in that day. Man, I can't talk. Other thing to note, yes, Councilmember Low did say that a little group of us showed up at county council last night to make some public comments. Thank you very much for pushing forward our Montu proposal. That was, thanks for listening. We appreciate that. And it was, being a government junkie, I always appreciate that kind of thing. So it was a good way to spend an evening, and I appreciate watching the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Nothing on, right? Nothing's, nothing's changed. Yeah. So I was also gone last week. So, and was at National Night Out, so I thought I'd bring that up. It was amazing, like it always is. Down there with my family. A couple other things, building, I call it the triangle building, the one on Main Street that's right by the flagpole. What is it? Howland. So the Howland Building looks awesome right now. So they just freshened it up, put new paint, paint the trim. Just hoping that that keeps moving to our other downtown buildings, hopefully, down Main Street. One Seventy-Ninth Sidewalk is looking great. Saw it again here, of course, on the way in. I see it several times a week, but it's looking amazing. Looking forward to the fair week coming up and the parade. And we have been playing pickleball a lot in my household on the new courts. So we've been enjoying those. Went and checked out, while my boy was at football practice, checked out the pickleball courts at Lake Tye, and they were packed, like people waiting to like take on the winner, which was really cool. We go to a different one. We go to Sky River. It's usually a little bit quieter there, and it's, it's great. So don't, I mean, I guess kind of gave away my secret, unfortunately. But no, it's been, been a decent week, and we've got a lot of fun stuff going on. And thank you also, even though I wasn't able to make the Montu thing that you guys did yesterday, had put some time into it. And also with Snohomish County tomorrow being on there, had mentioned it a few times. And so yeah, I really appreciate you and everyone else taking that time and you guys going out and talking about it. So appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Beaumont?
I thought you were going to go to Councilmember Walker first.
I was going from the outside in.
I like it. All right.
Gamble, because he was remote, I should have gone from him over to him. We'll be good with this, right?
Sounds good. All right. So I'm just going to piggyback on what Kyle just said about the Howland Building, and it is looking really nice. And we have, I think we, or I've mentioned this before, that we have a plaque project that we are planning to get underway here in just a little bit to put some historic plaques on some of our historic buildings downtown, and the Howland Building is one of them. So stay tuned on that. We have had some really nice donations from Rotary and some other individuals in the community. So that's exciting. I attended movie in, the Movies in the Park event last Friday and was really excited that, leading up to the movie, there was a community musical group playing. It's a subset or a group of saxophone players from the Monroe Community Band. And I had no idea that, leading up to the Movies in the Park, that there was an opportunity for local musical groups to play. And it was really cool. And so that's something that, again, Mike and the Parks and Rec team, thank you for making that opportunity available to local musicians. Really a wonderful touch. And it was just fun to watch people come in with their jammies and their food and their blankets and get all set up to watch the movie. So that's just a wonderful event. So that was great. The Ren Fair, unlike my, my friend, Councilmember Foulter here, I actually did get into the Ren Fair a few weeks ago, and it was really, really interesting time. I was missing my costume. Next year I will wear my costume. Everyone, oh, wow. That is really unfortunate. But yeah, it was a really interesting day. And I just think we're so lucky to have that event here. And it really does drive a lot of tourism and unfortunately also traffic impacts. But it was a lot of fun and I'm glad. I didn't get in last year. I, it was sold out. So this year I got my tickets early. Gosh, let's see. We had our last CAC meeting for the comp plan and just a shout out to Director Bailey and Kate for putting that together with MIG. It's a really well-attended event, I think, for the most part. And I know Councilmember Hanford's been a part of that effort as well. And I really feel like we had a lot of input into the comp plan. And so that was a really great thing to be part of. And last but not least, we may have a permanent place for the two buck houses. We had some interest in the, from the fairgrounds to create, and again, putting, putting this out there. It may not happen, but I'm really excited about it. They're interested in potentially moving them next to the Shanahan Cabin and creating sort of a historic, sort of cultural area there at the fairgrounds. So we'll see what happens. We'll know later this fall, but that was a real positive phone call that I got. And looking forward to seeing how that all turns out. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
I will, I'll keep it short tonight. Just had a lot of people come up to me and tell me how amazing the courts have looked. So thank you, Director Farrell and all the park staff that worked on that. It is incredible to see the amount of activity that's going on out there every day. I just, it's, it's amazing. I think we're so lucky to have the parks that we do. Couldn't have them without the staff that keep them looking beautiful. So yeah, thank you. And thank you also to Senator Leas and Representative Gainer and Low for going on that 522 tour and your staff as well. And thank you for listening to us last night. If we think that we can get a lot of public comments sometimes, I think their entire session yesterday was for public comment, and it was a packed house. And I, I think despite how many people were going up to speak, you could tell they genuinely were listening. So I appreciate you guys and thanks for setting the example.
All right. Thank you very much. City Administrator report extended agenda. Administrator Knight?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank councilmembers. Looking forward then to the council's upcoming agenda for the meeting on Tuesday, August 27. We will have a, a brief review of transportation and parks, right? And a couple of items listed for new business. We have an update on the design for the waste bottle treatment, bio-solubility, dryer, and then the draft on the 24th, 24th of August. And for the regular business meeting, we have a public hearing on the footpath, 30% position. We will have a regular consent to the items, 80 minutes of schedule. For unfinished business, we have ordinance for downtown, downtown commercial dependence. That's the question that you need, right? The motel voucher program contract with Montrails in America with Rich Adams, and then the supplement contract then for the motel voucher program with Snohomish County. Under new business, we've got a new business advents for, for, for Rich Adams. We're going to have a department reporting for finance, HR, IT, community development, and, and, and their school reports. And that will be meeting for September 3. We probably say that we're going to be canceled, remove the regulations.
Right. Any questions on the extended agenda? Go ahead. Administrator report?
All right. All right. Well, the intent of this, better than you. Still not super easy. But the intent of the slide was really to share with us in the council, the work that the team has been doing to do outreach education on the Proposition One, the Parks and Public Safety Services meeting that is now scheduled for voters on the November 5th. And I just wanted to give the council an overview of just the extensive outreach that we have been doing for the last several weeks and then the outreach that is planned that will continue September, particularly in the first part of October, before that will take place. So we have a website page now that is completely dedicated. So if you are getting questions and are uncertain, you can always move people to the city's websites and they can just search by the type of Proposition One and they will go straight to the page with all of the information on there. We do have now a frequently asked questions section. Again, that's on the webpage as a link, but it's also available in hard copy. So if you are typing any meetings or want to ask run information around the neighborhood, you can certainly do that in the frequently asked questions sheet. We have an information, a folio and fact sheet. Those are gonna be, those have been published or we need to have professionally printed copies too. Those may already be ready and available for us to pick up. So we'll be starting to deliver those around town, at the library and the hospital, the school district. Just again, trying to see what we can do to make sure that the information is getting out. I know when I've been talking to people about it and sharing information, I've been asking if I can pay the debt my partners who did just on this, for example, right? People, places where people are sitting for a period of time and they just, they're looking for something to pick up and create something to make copies available to people as well, to distribute those. We are continuing to do kind of regular updates on social media, just pushing out a little bit of information ahead of time. Also planning to put information in our utility billings. So that will be how it happens for September. And then we also have a postcard that will figure out directly to all of our schools as well. So we're really working hard to make sure that information is available to people. I know that as I've been speaking with the only community that I know, very few people right now are really aware of it. So we're really trying to do a heavy push in the month of September. We will come back. Kids are in school and families and community members begin to get kind of re-engaged and folks going out around the community. So that's only now a few shorts, two weeks away for the first part of September. And that's really where our heavy push is gonna be for the next six weeks. Just trying to make sure that people have awareness of the proposition. That's really what the citizens can make by communication. So we will continue to update the council. I think I've been sharing information as it's been coming to me, making sure that you're aware of it as well. But always happy to answer any questions. Our communications team at Bojo has been giving this effort and they've really been doing a whole lot of talk to make sure that at the staff level that we're providing all the input and contributing review from a level of commitment. It really has been a team effort across the city at this point. I really appreciate it. Again, if you've got other opportunities for us to speak, we have a speakers tour set up. So we are meeting, for example, with the Miami CA, the Rotary, the Quonos clubs. But again, if you know about the clubs or other homeowners associations or communities, neighborhoods that would like to hear more, we're available to come in and speak with them for any.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Administrator Knight? All right. Thank you. Mayor's report. So a couple items, I, just in case you didn't see it in Monroe this week or on Facebook, the count was 4,000 people attended National Night Out. Is that the number?
Yep.
So total of 4,000 people over the course of like three hours. I had somebody who had attended a couple other National Night Outs that evening and then I've attended also others in my other capacity. And I can safely say that no other place I've been has more than 1,000, let alone 4,000. So great work from all of our staff putting that on and also the Rotary for actually putting it on, but us providing the support and everything. And also, like I said last week, I really appreciate everybody that came, the 75 booths that were there. So thank you. Next item, municipal campus. I don't, since I don't go to council meetings, I don't drive past the municipal campus as much. We ended up for the 522 meeting, ending our tour there. And if you haven't been by the municipal campus lately, I recommend that you go by. It is going vertical. You'll get a sense of the way that the city council chambers will look. You'll see that the ceilings are kind of high and everything. And I think it's gonna be a really great asset for our community and a really great place for us to celebrate community and also do the business of our community. So swing by, take a look at it, get a sense of how things are going. And it's my hope that, and this is just me speaking, because I'm sure they'll say something different. It's my hope that, you know, around this time next year, we'll, we'll have a ribbon cutting and be looking at our first council meeting in there sometime around this time. Don't look at Jake. I don't want to make him nervous. Deborah's not gonna make eye contact with any of you or me and I'm not looking her direction. So knock on wood. Thank you, councilmembers, for, for your support and leadership in that. Comprehensive Plan, I really appreciated the fact that I was able to make it from Kent all the way up to the, to the council meeting. My training that I had down in Kent at the raceway ended an hour early and was really thankful I was able to make it up there without pit turning anybody on the way up. Sorry, I got to learn something new yesterday that I'll never use again.
Hopefully.
I'll talk to you about it at the end of the meeting if you want. Anyway, I, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Kate, for doing all the work for Harris for that. And thank you very much, Councilmember Walker and Councilmember Fulter for going. I was gonna call you Heather again. I, also the Davises were there and spoke and also our Community Human Services Advisory Board Chair was there in his personal capacity. Chair Harrington? Harrington, sorry. I was gonna say Harrigan. I knew that wasn't right. James, yeah, James was there. I did not, we did not stick around to listen to his comment because, you know, we were hungry. So, but, and I do appreciate the councilmembers for being there from the county to, to listen and consider the thoughts that we brought forward, including Councilmember Lowe, who's still here. Yes. So thank you. As, one of the things that has come to mind, I was talking to, talking to Kate a little bit before this meeting, back when I was a councilmember, probably a year or two before I left, we adopted a resolution that identified how our city wanted to grow. And so one of the things that Kate and I were talking about is maybe over the next 12 months or so, having a discussion with the council about how it is that we want to grow horizontally. We adopted a resolution, I don't know, had to have been before 2009. That was interesting. Okay. Sorry, my voice did something weird. But it would be nice if we looked at just, you know, reaffirming the direction we want to grow. I know that we've talked about 522. I know that we've got land in our UGA along 522. And I think that it would just be good just to say, hey, this is the direction that we want to grow into the future. And then like that, the next time we have an opportunity to affect the comp plan, the next council, the next mayor will have the opportunity to use that as a blueprint. You'll be a little bit farther along in that discussion rather than, you know, two years from now, what do we want to do? Well, I don't know. Why didn't we talk about it? So anyway, just, just letting you know that that's something that I'll be talking with Deborah a little bit more about and also Director Bailey a little bit more about and see if we can get it on the work program for sometime next year. Okay? And then sharing that with people too, so that the county is also aware of kind of a reaffirmation of the direction that we want to grow and everything. All right. Okay. Next item then is downtown. Just letting you know that I received an email with a series of complaints from a business and building owner in the downtown. One of the things they were expressing concerns about was a neighboring, a neighboring building that is allowing people to park out on Main Street. Just because of staffing, we haven't really been assertive about enforcing the parking laws in the downtown. And the other complaint that was coming up was about garbage being left outside of a garbage bin. Of course, when we go there to, to look at it, the garbage has already been picked up by Republic. But just letting you know that we've received some complaints. I was talking to Deborah earlier today and thought that, you know, the new downtown group that is coming together, that that might be a good place to talk with the downtown businesses and the building owners and just say, hey, you know, we've heard these complaints from one of our business owners. What this means is that we need to get out there and start enforcing our parking rules and everything. And when we start doing that, that means that people who live in those buildings in the downtown and also people who are, who are your employees may start getting parking tickets and things like that and just talking to them about how they'd like to approach it. Unfortunately, and, and again, I've been doing this since '03, unfortunately, there's, there hasn't been as much engagement in the last meeting or two from downtown businesses and building owners. So we'll see what we can do to, to get them to, to come out to the next meeting. When, in my earlier career as a councilmember, like '03 to '05, we had somebody that did a really good job pulling the downtown together. We used to hear from them with one voice. Neil Watkins was his name. Okay. So he used to come to pretty much every meeting. He was the chamber chair or something, executive director, but he really focused on the downtown. And I felt then that there was a tight connection with what the downtown was looking for. And we tried to bring in the Main Street program. That helped out with the voice for a little bit and then that kind of went away. And it just continues to be an issue with our downtown, wanting to get those businesses in the downtown together to talk. So I feel that a couple of the issues that were brought up really, you know, we need to talk to the downtown businesses and the building owners about what their desires are for the downtown. And I'll add to this too, that in my, my recent trip back in June, just seeing the way that downtown quarters were kept and how clean they were, a lot of that was investment by the government, but it was also a lot more investment in people taking a sense of ownership in the spaces in front of their businesses. And that's been a point of frustration in my job here as mayor is just people saying, when is somebody gonna come out and shovel the snow in front of my business or something like that? You know, I was raised in Virginia. You went out and shoveled your own driveway, shoveled your own sidewalk. And if you owned a business, you shoveled the sidewalk in front of your business and you went ahead and picked up the garbage and showed a sense of ownership. Otherwise, somebody could slip and fall or people might not come by your business. You know, I, I, I don't know what it is about our downtown, but we can't look at the government to do everything. And at the same time, we're trying to do things to, to help get them to come together. So with all this said, I just wanted to share, read an email, heard the concerns, I've heard similar concerns from, from that person before. And I'm just going to express to them that, you know, we have a meeting coming up and I would encourage them to, to get together and talk about what some of their thoughts are. So is any, before I move off of that, does any councilmember have any concerns about anything I said? Because I just said some things are about downtown coming together and everything. Okay. If we end up doing anything with the parking, we'll go ahead and update you because I know, again, we haven't been enforcing the parking in the downtown. For us to do that with our CSOs, that just means making some adjustments to work and we may start getting some complaints that we haven't had in the past. Okay? So didn't want you to be surprised. Last thing, 522. Had a really great tour tonight. You already saw who was here. You heard who else was here. It was really great, being able to take a tour down the corridor. I think it was good that Senator Leas and I both worked the swing shift, which meant that people got to sit in a little bit of traffic. It wasn't as bad as some nights that I've been in. But it was nice because I was able to point out why it is we have slowdowns during certain parts of that. Director Barnes did a really great job of explaining about what this means to students. And the fire district was able to do a really good job of explaining what it meant in terms of accidents along the corridor, basically from the river, basically to the river. So between the river and Paradise Lake Road where the stoplight is today. One of the things that was brought up was the importance of revenue. And I was taught when I was a kid, you can't get something for nothing. And what I assured them was that one of the things we've done in our community is that we don't just say no to revenues. What we do is we want to know what we're gonna get. Because, you know, you, you do want to get something for something. You know, you realize you're not gonna get something for nothing, but you do want to get something for something. So I affirmed for them that, you know, if they are looking at revenue needs and things like that, that we will listen with an open mind, that we will be supportive when 522 is in there and certainly if we can get Highway 2 in there as well, that, that I at least expressed that I was supportive of it and that we've shown a history in this community of being supportive. We just don't want to be paying a tax, which we've done time and time again, and get nothing for it. You know, when these things pass statewide, we pay the taxes whether we get the project or not. And if it's gonna pass, I'd rather have the project in there and have our representatives support the tax so that we can get the project than oppose the tax, still pay the tax and get, and not get the project. So anyway, just sharing that part. I think that's all that I have to report tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number eight, discussion item number 8.1, Draft Utility System Plans Update, Chapter Eight, Capital Facilities Element of the 244 Comprehensive Plan with Director Roberts. And friends.
He's en route? Okay. We're being joined by our project engineer tonight from BHC. So I was just gonna wait till he enters the meeting. Maybe. Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just like to introduce tonight online, Ryan Jones from BHC Engineers. He's our lead project engineer who's looking over the water sewer and stormwater plans for us this update cycle. I also have John Landy, Operations Manager, Water and Sewer over there, runs our treatment plant and our sewer collections and water system. And then Jordan Otto, Operations Manager of many things, but also including tonight's focus, stormwater. So now that we're through the introductions, I'm Jaka. It's nice to see you all again. Once a decade or so, the city updates its comprehensive plan. As you're well aware, you've seen many of the draft chapters so far. At that time, the Public Works Department, albeit my opinion somewhat foolishly, decides to update its utility system plans as well. So with that in mind, the drinking water, sanitary sewer and stormwater plans are going to be adopted along with the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plans. There will be appendices to that element. And we are here to review them tonight as a first draft with you. The plans are attached. And also attached to the agenda bill is the utilities portion of the six-year capital facilities plan, which is typically brought to council as an ordinary update on an annual basis. We're doing this a little bit differently this year. You've already seen the transportation component. You've seen the parks component. Now we're bringing forward the utilities. So they're, they're not all together like they usually are. They're in separate pieces. However, they do make one whole. While some of you may have read every single word of the utility system plans already, I know it's a lot of, there was a lot of stuff in there. Some of you may not. And so we would only request that if you do come across something in the next week or so, that if you could get those comments to us, either in writing, you can call one of us or emails, fine, however you prefer to do it. We'd appreciate that by the 27th so we can keep our project on schedule. With that in mind then, like all things comp plan, the utility system plans are guided by Imagine Monroe. And really, we, we get into the standard line from Imagine Monroe when we're talking about public works. It's a community-centered infrastructure that's available to all. That guides what we do here. So, next slide please. So the requirement to plan, it's different for each of the plans. The drinking water plan is not the same as the sewer plan, which is not the same as the stormwater plan. They do have some common elements or common themes to them, but each one has its own regulatory requirements and/or regulatory guidance. And they are each regulated by different agencies. With the water system plan would be Department of Health. Sanitary Sewer is Department of Ecology, but that's one branch of ecology that deals with sewer. And then there's the other branch of ecology that deals with stormwater, so the treatment thereof and the discharge of stormwater. Next slide please. So the purpose of the plans, what are we trying to accomplish here? A holistic assessment of all of the mineral utilities, including an evaluation of our existing system and how they functions, or how they function, our current capacity, the age or obsolescence, is the fancy word to use, the age of our infrastructure, our staffing levels, and then making sure that we're meeting regulatory criteria, whether that's through drinking water testing before it's delivered to our, our customers to drink, or whether that's through discharge of sanitary sewer into the Skikomish River so that people can, you know, continue to use the river and recreate it and not be recreating in water that's unclean or unfit for discharge. So we also develop the capital and operating plans for the next 10 to 20-year period, depending what the plan requirements are, to meet growth targets and to ensure that we deliver service to our customers in the future. So this aligns with the comp plan in that we have growth targets in the comp plan where we're looking to build up or build out, as the mayor was just talking about. And we want to make sure that in that same sense, we can provide not only transportation, which we talked about a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago now. We also want to be able to provide utilities, put water in the house, take water away from the house, get water take water away from the house, get water from the sky that drains into the ground. Right? So lastly, we do a financial evaluation. And those of you who have looked through the plans, notice that chapter is not quite done yet. I just got it back from our consultants at FCS Group. So we will be including it in the next run around of this. Through that, we assess connection fees, operational costs, current rates, staffing costs, and then future needs, fiscal needs to make sure that the system remains reliable and sustainable. So we are also going to be bringing back to council the opportunity to review rates and connection fees and do a full financial analysis in 2026, I believe is the plan right now. At this point, we are doing essentially a snapshot of where we are in time, not recommending any changes or updates to our current existing financial model. Next slide. Maybe. There it is. So we'll start with sanitary sewer. The conveyance system is really the story of this plan, the pipes and the pumps, lift stations and conveyance system. We completed a full system flow model and identified current and future capacity concerns based on growth or also some of the capacities of our pump stations and lift stations. Updated the six-year CFP, did the 20-year lookout. What we found, good news, deficiencies in capacity are very limited in our sanitary sewer system. We've done an excellent job over the past decade or so, dealing with the deficiencies that came out of our last plan. And we've addressed almost all of those. And our capital projects over the next decade or 20 years, depending, are really driven by obsolescence. So whether that's obsolescence of skated systems, that would be the telemetry systems that operate our pumps and pipes and tell us where levels are. Whether we're talking about obsolescence of pipes or access points in the road, you know, old brick manholes or pipes that are made of aged concrete or vitrified clay, which need to be changed out, or other obsolescent pieces. We also updated our operations and maintenance program, including looking at staffing and also, again, continued regulatory compliance. With that, John, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. With, with the sewer component, the wastewater treatment plant was also looked at, not in as great a detail as the sewer collection system because the treatment plant had the most recent engineering report that was done just a couple of years ago. But the plan did, or the utility systems plan did look and confirm that the capacities and flows that were anticipated were accurate in that plan as well. Wastewater reuse. We have looked at that. It's looked at in this current plan, in this draft plan. We've looked at it in previous utility system plans as well as our most recent wastewater treatment plant engineering reports. And wastewater reuse is common, not so much in this part of the country and primarily is because of the cost benefit. Secondary wastewater treatment is what we're requiring now for discharge of surface waters of the state. But reuse requires tertiary treatment and completely separate infrastructure. And the millions of dollars that it would cost to install those, that infrastructure to meet those treatment requirements for the reuse, just the cost benefit isn't there. And so, and we wanted to bring that forward. I guess there's a question, I think, council member Walker. Questions concerning reuse?
Did you have your flag up?
I did not, but actually read my mind, just barely a question. The irrigation of Sky River Park, that, that sounds genius. Is the too expensive aspect still applicable to that as well?
Yeah, so when we initially looked at it, that's, was the obvious place. So the Sky River Park gets irrigated and, and just for relative cost comparison, if, if we irrigated, so the park gets irrigated about three months out of the year. If you looked at irrigating the park every single day for one month, 70,000 gallons a day, the cost for what the city purchases water from the city of Everett would be about $7,500. If you looked at the procurement and the construction of the infrastructure required for reuse, it would be many millions of dollars. And with amortized over 10 years, the, the daily cost would be like $250,000 a day. And so, again, that's just relative cost. And so the cost benefit of it, it just doesn't, doesn't calculate out.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other questions before we continue?
Okay, slide. One of the capital projects I, that is identified in the plan is the Short Columbia Sewer Project. Again, this is looked at with obsolescence. The condition of this pipe in many areas is poor. We've done several projects to kind of restore what, what is existing. One of the things that we do when we try to prioritize our, our projects, especially in the water and sewer department, is look at areas where there's frequent problems. That happened recently with the Wagner line that we, was just recently placed. When we have a series of failures, especially when it impacts private property, we look at those and prioritize those. This is one of those projects. In addition to repairing what we call obsolescent or pipe and port conditions, this also project will separate some storm from the sewer, which is beneficial, obviously in many ways, to the treatment facility and making sure we have capacity and getting some of that capacity back that we get from the stormwater entrance system. Okay, slide Joe. Any questions?
All right. Up there on the screen, really not for your digestion in this meeting, but just more to point out that it's in the packet tonight is the sewer portion of the capital facilities plan. Just, again, the reminder that it's there. So, next slide, please, Jody. All right, moving on to stormwater. Stormwater distinctly different from sanitary sewer in the way that it's looked at from a regulatory standpoint. Mostly the stormwater planning requirements come from our NPDES permit, which I'm sure you're tired of hearing public works say over the years, the requirements of the NPDES permit, it's a federal permit, it's a pass down. We don't get to say no. That's just what it boils down to. So plan focus, future capital planning and cost estimating, system operational requirements, meeting compliance with the NPDES. And in, in stormwater, actually, we have quite a few projects that looked out in our plan, 24 projects for CIP. We also looked at our operations and maintenance program and continued regulatory compliance. Next slide. And I will pass this over to Jordan.
Yeah, our CIP identifies, as Jake was saying, 24 total projects in the plan. And within those projects, we are focusing on maintaining our NPDES permit with compliance through that. Some of the other key components when we're looking at these projects is improving water quality, reducing flooding or ponding of roads and in ditches, making sure that we're keeping those clear and getting, getting water moved. And then eliminating barriers to our everyday operations and maintenance. We're doing a lot of maintenance, ditches, ponds and other roads and just making sure that we are able to sustain that. Next slide. This slide highlights one of the projects found in the plan. And this project covers some of the things that we really look at when, when, when thinking about stormwater improvements. And this one was chosen because it covers quite a, quite a few of the things we're looking at, which is limited or failing existing drainage facilities in the project area. Again, focusing on localized ponding or flooding, making sure we're keeping that water moving, improving water quality. This project, as several of them are in the industrial park, that water flows, a lot of it to Lake Ty and then on to French Creek into the Snohomish River. So it's, for us to be good stewards is making sure that we're having good water quality, that we're moving out of the city. And then with lots of our utility projects, just making sure that we are improving our pedestrian bike access throughout the project area.
All right. And there's the CFP again. Next slide, please, Jody. So water system. This is actually the, I'm going to say bread and butter of Ryan Jones, who led our project at BHC. He very much enjoys himself a hydraulic model and spent many hours talking about it, which we sort of appreciated, Ryan, that was just for you. So we upgraded the, the system hydraulic model, including the flow demand that includes customer demand, fire flow, and then storage demand so that we make sure that we have enough water in our reservoirs. Also, our minimum pressure, maintaining that operating pressure of 20 PSI. And then also looked at our CIP projects. You'll notice when we get to the CIP slide for water, it's quite a bit busier than the other two because there are a lot of CIP projects for water that are coming up that are, are primarily also obsolescence based, much like sewer. So similar story. We don't have a lot of capacity issues, which is good because we've addressed those over the last decade. We have a few more in water than we did in sewer. However, we do have obsolescent water mains. We have, oh, somewhere around 40 miles of AC pipe still left remaining in our system that will need to be replaced. Most of those center around increasing flow capacity of our existing four and six inch mains, which don't meet our current standards because they can't feed a fire hydrant. And so those are the ones that we will be looking at going into the future. And again, we updated our operations and maintenance program. John?
Outside of the AC main replacement that Jake could just talk about, this is not an AC line replacement. This is a transmission main. It's a 16 inch transmission main from the Ingram Hill area down to the fairgrounds. This is a cast iron line, but based on the, again, prioritizing our projects. This is a, it's been infrastructure that we haven't had problems yet, fortunately. But the level of risk that is within that, with the age of that cast iron pipe, it is high on our list for priority for replacement. An estimate of a million and a half dollars. And we will be looking to do that replacement.
And there's the big list that I was just talking about a moment ago. Next slide, please, Jody. Hey, and that closes us out. So we are certainly open to questions. That concludes our presentation. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All right. Oh, council member Walker, go ahead.
You guys have amazing vocabulary, by the way. I'm going to be a better Scrabble player after tonight. When is the Ingram Road cast iron pipe replacement scheduled to be?
The Ingram Road cast iron, I don't know off the top of my head when that's scheduled. It is on the list and I think it's either three phases still remaining. So it's a phased project. That's quite a lengthy line. We'll get back to you with an answer. I'll email the whole council.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item eight point two, Monroe 2044, future land use map with planning manager Turlow.
So we're bringing Alex Dupie forward. He is the project manager for MIG on our project. And while he, while we're doing that, I just want to walk through what is in your packet. We have heard a lot of concerns about buildable lands and capacity analysis. So there's a lot of data in your packets and it just really walks through part of our baseline analysis. So I will walk you through what's in there. The other thing I will be walking you through is the different, it's in the, it's in this presentation, but it's also in your packet, the items, the major changes that we're recommending for the future land use map in this go around. Also included is the spring 2023 public outreach. So you've seen us out there a lot last year and we're out there again this year, making sure we're, we heard the same things. So some of that information is included. And then also included in your packet is a refresher of the land use scenarios, the presentation you saw last November. So it's just some background information. Some of it, again, is pretty heavy, very data oriented. Next slide, please. Hi, Alex. Thank you. Okay, so our starting point was your, the adopted 2015 land use map. This was the last periodic GMA update for the comprehensive plan. This plan did make some major changes to the land use designations. This is where the, excuse me, the city, not on this map, but in the land use element, the city was divided into 10, or excuse me, five different sectors. You had the new concept of the regional facilities, which was basically US two and 522. This was the introduction also of, I'm sorry, back to the five different sectors. So you had the regional services. You had West Monroe, which is basically the Freylands, including residential and the industrial area. You had the Skikomish River or Skikomish Parks, North Kelsey, and the transportation designations were all part of that concept, which helped build this adopted map. This is also the first time, or this is when the tourist commercial designation was created. So that was a major change from the years past. Next slide, please. Oh, no worries. So this one you're going to get sick of. This is all of the layers that go into how we get to our comprehensive plan. It really begins with the Growth Management Act. One piece that you may not be aware of is the Washington's Office of Financial Management. They're the ones that give us the population estimates. They also do the forecasting that goes to Puget Sound Regional Council as well as Snohomish County. They put it in their models. They tell us what we should be accommodating in the next 20 year horizon. And they actually do it in a high, medium, low. The numbers that we are working off of that came through PSRC and the county is the, the middle range. That information is not provided, but I just wanted to give you the background. The next layer again is our multi-county planning policies. That is Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050. There's also the economic document, which was introduced several weeks ago with the economic chapter. And so there's a few other pieces with that. The next piece that goes into our project is the 2021 Buildable Lands Report. We rely heavily on Snohomish County. They have the expertise, the analysis. And the last one that was done told us how much capacity we would have left through 2035 because that was our last planning horizon. After that, we look at the initial population, employment and housing allocations, which you saw last year, and that comes directly from Snohomish County. And then finally, all of the outreach, talking to the residents of Monroe, business owners, visitors. We have this growth. How are we going to accommodate it? Where do you want to see it? What changes do you think Monroe needs? And so all of that information was put together to get where we're going. I do want to just spend, next slide, just a few moments on the buildable lands. And again, I just, the reason I want to bring this up is there have been some concerns about the analysis. It is a very lengthy process. Again, I did give you some excerpts in your packet tonight. But they look at what's in the growth, or what's in our growth area. They take out critical areas. They take out right of way. So they're taking out a lot of things that cannot be built upon. They also look at what our, our zoning is. Their, the county is not looking at somebody else's zoning. They look at, it was zonless, but what was actually developed? So that type of information is also taken into consideration. And so it just for, I really just wanted to provide this, that there's a lot of work that goes into this. We did get some comments from a resident. And so we did make further modifications. Some of the numbers the county had, for example, still included Trombley Hill. So we took that out. That wasn't, you can't develop that now. It's going to be a park. Next slide, please. And so you've seen these slides before, but again, this is just a reminder, the results from the county's buildable lands, the graphic on the left illustrates potential grow, or potential for future housing development. The graphic on the right illustrates possible employment for jobs. And then here's our numbers. This is what we need to get to. 2020 census and then our 2044 allocations. And we, we plan only for the city of Monroe, but we also have to look globally at our entire urban growth area. The county has, again, done most of the calculations on what they expect us to accommodate in 2044. So again, it's the city, the unincorporated, and then our total urban growth area. Again, in your packets, we do have some additional analysis because we have the OFM numbers for population changes and new residential units. So the total number that we're trying to accommodate has actually gotten a little bit smaller, which is nice.
Pause right there. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
What, what does, what's a penalty from the county if you don't meet these, these numbers?
So it's not, it's not a penalty and it's actually not the county. It's more globally with the Puget Sound Regional Council. And I honestly, I'm not, I'll put it this way. I'm not worried. The county has been extremely accurate over the last 20 years. So if you're concerned about what happens if we're too high or too low, I have not seen repercussions. I'll look to the mayor. I don't know if he knows of any as well.
Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, I was trying to figure out where the voice was coming from. In my head because it sounded real. Go ahead.
of my head, because it sounded real. Go ahead, Alex.
It's real, just distance. If the, if you don't, if you're comprehen, it's more broadly, if your comprehensive plan isn't certified by, by Puget Sound Regional Council and the state, that puts you at risk for grant money, actually. And so that's the, that's one of the triggers, is if you, if you don't meet your allocations and provide and meet state requirements, then you're at risk of losing, you know, grant funding for things like transportation and other elements that come through those, both regional and the state agencies. So there is that negotiation with the county early on in the process that Kate discussed with, you know, with you and previously, but it really comes down to, you know, future funding and being, you know, being, those options being possible for you.
Yeah, and Administrator Knight just reminded me, there's a difference between planning for it versus actually achieving it.
Correct.
So that was one thing that she wanted to mention, is that they want us to zone to reach those numbers, whether or not you actually meet them, because of market and everything is a different story. And also, if I remember correctly, we've been pretty good at hitting the, the target numbers that we've received in the past. The, the one thing that would cause me pause here, and I just, I just want to share this as sort of a learning lesson. Again, I'm trying to plant seeds, because I'm not going to be here. This is why it's important to be involved in the Puget Sound Regional Council in Snohomish County tomorrow, and why you show up at, at county council meetings. Because as we have said here before, the elected officials, PSRC can say that they're doing things based on metrics and all this other stuff and numbers. We all must realize that those numbers and those models are based on value judgments. It's not like Newton with the apple falling out of the tree, and it's 32 feet per second squared and all this other stuff. It's not actually measurable. These are arbitrary, value-based decisions that they use metrics to determine. And so at the heart of all of these things, when it comes to planning, yes, there are numbers. Yes, there are things you can measure, but you as a city, we as a city, need to speak with how we want to grow. You need to get on PSRC. I was there before, and because of a situation at my former position, it made it hard for me to continue working there at PSRC. But you, you need to get on Snohomish County tomorrow, be involved, and for the next comp planning process, make certain that you're sharing what our vision is and advancing that. Because these decisions are made at PSRC, these are elected officials, but they were not elected to be in those positions. And there are people that are put into those positions, because they go to Snohomish County tomorrow, where they do the votes and everything to put, to put people in those positions. So while we can't do anything, this go around in terms of, of saying that we want to do something different, as, as, Turtlow. As Kate just pointed out, the decisions are made through PSRC, given high, medium, low. The county council makes a decision, high, medium, or low, based on advice from Snohomish County tomorrow. There is a certain degree of self-selection as to who's there. So you need to make certain that you're on these boards, you're active, and that you form alliances with people, and you, and you make certain you stand up for what Monroe wants, and not just, not just accept what other politicians are asking you to do. And remember, you as council members are equal to any county council member or to the county executive. As two of you said last night, and as I echoed, you know Monroe better than they do. Okay, so I just, I want to take a pause right there, because it's easy to forget that these numbers come from somewhere. I'll be gone. Make certain that you all get involved, and the people that are replacing you get involved also. Okay, because this happens every 10 years. It's a long cycle. There's a long game here. And that's why you see the type of growth that you do in Arlington and other places, is that they've been in these things for a long time to get certain designations on things. It's why 522 and everything we've done with 522 to date is really important, is that if you don't keep it in front of them and stay engaged, they'll move on to something different, and the bodies will turn over, and new people will get in there. All right. So thank you. I use that as a, as a learning point. And anybody have any questions on the slide? You can take me outside afterwards, out back. Okay, go ahead, Kate.
I do just want to give one footnote to that. When the Growth Management Act was amended to returning us to a 10-year cycle, we are actually being held accountable to showing how we're achieving the housing. You've all heard that housing is an issue at the state, local, regional, county level. So in 2029, we actually have to provide a report to the Department of Commerce that's showing how we are or not getting close to the allocations that we have identified for the city. That is new, so we'll see how we do. Next slide, please. So this is just a fun graphic to remind you of all of the outreach. Last year, we did two farmers' markets, Pride Belonging, the Block Party, the Open House, which is not on the slide, a full day up at the high school. We had an online survey. This year, we've been at farmer's market twice. There was another open house. We were at the high school another day. We went to the senior center this time. There aren't any graphics of that, but those were some nice conversations at tables. So we've, we've really been listening to the community, and I'm very happy to report what we heard in the spring of last year is the same thing that we are hearing now. And it's some common themes. We want a different way to get around the community. We don't want to get in a car. We want different types of housing options. Housing's not affordable. So that, all of that information plays into where we're headed. So next slide, please. Again, this is just a slide there to remind you that we were responding when community members were saying, hey, you can't have that parcel in there. It's developed. Or you can't have that parcel in there, because it's now a park. You will see, if you look at the, the buildable lands map versus this one, we also took out all of the parcels that have been identified as pending, because we had a lot of subdivisions that were in the pipeline. So all of those have been removed for potential development into the future. We are counting them as now. As those houses are actually constructed, we get credit for them. So they, they have been accounted for. So then moving on, I'm going to actually ask Alex to take over and just walk you from the base of where we started with the buildable lands, some additional refinements, and then using the tool that MIG had to help us get to that next step of achieving these population, housing, and employment allocations.
Great. Thanks, Kate. And just to step back just for a moment, the graph, graphic that Kate showed of all of the engagement from Phase 1 from last year, we're just wrapping up the Phase 2 summary, which includes all of the information that Kate just mentioned, including high school, the pop-ups, as well as the, the public events and surveys. So you'll have a similar amount of information here in the next couple of weeks or so to review in support of the process that's moving forward. So with that, just I wanted to kind of review, and you've seen some of these graphics before from previous presentations, but just to remind the council, kind of the, the process that we went through to actually get to the determination of whether or not we meet the growth targets for population and housing. And we use a tool called Urban Footprint, combined with GIS analysis. Urban Footprint is a scenario planning tool that allows you to, you know, essentially test a series of what-ifs. What if certain parcels developed in this way versus another? How would you take out, how would you account for things like critical areas, parking, all of those other kind of, you know, specific, specific elements that really inform how much capacity's out there? And so this slide essentially shows on the left, those, those just gray areas or those, those open boxes, those are the parcels that were identified within the 2019 Buildable Lands inventory. As Kate mentioned, we did remove any parcels that were, had already been identified as pending or permitted for projects. And I believe there are about 900 units that were already pending or permitted after the final buildable lands inventory was completed. So we did account for that, doing a scrub of all of your parcels and permit data before we actually got into the formal scenario planning. So what we do after that is start to assign potential future land uses. And that middle bar is essentially the scenario planning tool. It looks at different types of land uses from a development standpoint, the densities, the assumptions underneath of that. And we essentially start painting those areas that are deemed vacant, redevelopable, or partially developable. And, and you can switch to the next slide, Kate. Essentially, the outcomes of that are a series of, of numbers, basically showing how close we're meeting the targets. And so this is a, a blow up of an early version of what that starts to look like. And so that little red circle is actually out of place. It should be right in the middle, over those, those highlighted yellow parcels there. But the, the, essentially what this looks at is what is the existing land use? Where were the parcels identified through the buildable lands inventory? What has the community been saying about in terms of growth and change within neighborhoods? And then how would we apply future growth to that? And so for this example, it's surrounded by single-family neighborhoods. There are some other types of uses there, whether it's commercial or mixed use or other elements. And so what we do for these, this, these scenario planning tools is essentially paint those little blue boxes, a specific land use. And that land use is tied to development types. That could be metal housing. It could be mixed use. It could be detached residential. It really just depends on the location within the city that, that we're painting. But in this example, those, those little boxes are the only boxes that we're painting for, for additional capacity, because that's what the buildable lands inventory told us to, where to look. Next slide, please. And so there are, you can get into the depths of this, and I'm not going to drive through this, but each of these development types within the scenario planning tool gets into pretty specific detail about the types of buildings, development types, parking, landscaping, other elements that, you know, you can start dialing, dialing in based on what your zoning requirements are in terms of site development. And so we did actually get into more specifics on what does detached residential look like within Monroe? What does multifamily look like in with Monroe? And then what is the vision for some of these newer areas that we potentially may be considering for new land use types? And so we applied, we updated this, and then reapplied that to, to the model. And so essentially, that outcome is what you saw initially within those concepts we showed last November, I believe. We had two concepts. We went to a single proposed alternative that we evaluated in the EIS, and then went through that formal process to where we're at now, which is essentially developing the draft future land use map. So Kate, I think that's my last, last slide, but maybe I can stop there if there's any questions on the process for how we got here.
Any questions? Okay, no questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so this is what we came up with. The, the high, the darker colors illustrate where there's still potential development within the different land use categories. Generally, yellow is residential, red, purple are commercial, mixed use, gray is industrial. Captures most of them. And then if you could go to the next slide, here are all the proposed changes. And so I'm going to quickly walk you through them. And again, this is also in your packet. The biggest one is we're recommending a transition in the, of the very lowest residential density to the medium. And that, that, we're looking at that for a couple of reasons. If you look at the development patterns that actually occurred in Monroe, nothing is really at that residential four, because people took advantage of the former PRD code that we allowed. And so the densities are actually closer to our, our seven would be the zoning that would go along with your medium density. And so we want to reflect what's actually happened within the city of Monroe. A second benefit to that is, as we try to annex our urban growth area, it's actually one of the requirements now of the county, when we go to the Boundary Review Board, they're looking at annexation at six units per acre. So it's helping us, and it's also helping us get to the targets, or excuse me, allocations that we're looking at for housing and residential. The next change, and this, this is unfortunate, there was a decision done in 2015 to establish a transportation zone. It was only for SR 522 and 203. The thing about that is there's some land uses that went along with the zoning that we would never allow. And so if you take that transportation designation out and just leave it as right-of-way, it's an easier way of handling it. It would still allow you to do some of the things, well, it would allow you to do the roads. It would allow you to do potential trails, which have been talked about potentially in the US 2 bypass. It would allow you to have utility corridors. So from planning's perspective, it's actually a cleaner way of dealing with the right-of-ways. So it's removing something that was done in 2015. Then I want to walk you through the commercial proposals. The first one is off of Roosevelt Road. It's the northern part of, the northwest portion of our city limits. The concept there is to allow more of actually a mixed use, but we keep hearing a desire to have some kind of grocery store, some kind of neighborhood, commercial restaurant. That location is nice from a transportation perspective, because you can go north and you can go south to get around Roosevelt. It also is a branch off to get into the Robin Hood area, our new Woods, was it Monroe Woodlands subdivision. And so it, it feels like there's a good potential there. And again, it's responding to communities' desire to see something different happen in that area. It would also allow for attached housing. The next commercial node is off of Chain Lake Road. And again, this was responding to residents who said, we're tired of driving all the way down to US 2. Could you have like a 7-Eleven or a mini mart or something where we don't have to go all the way down to US 2? It, there are available parcels there. So that one was added as well. The next big change is the whole area that is south of the hospital. It's currently more of a high-density residential. There's a desire to make that a mixed use. So you could see different types of uses, the residential remains, but it could be envisioned differently. Of note, we did not have trouble figuring out how to accommodate our housing. Our challenge was employment. We don't have a whole lot of land to work with, and so we're trying to get really creative. Next up is the entire corridor for the commercial zoning on US 2. It would allow that entire area to redevelop like we have for North Kelsey. So it would allow the inclusion of residential, which is not currently permitted. It's going to require a lot of work on the zoning side, but that was the concept, to start getting more uses, to better utilize parking lots that are empty, and it would be meeting our needs from an employment perspective. The downtown commercial, it's highlighted, but really, it's not a change. We're just hoping to see more intensity of development. And that's also true for the Main Street mixed use. It's already mixed use. We're just hoping to see that it develops a little differently. We have heard throughout the Planning Commission process, a little bit from our community advisory group, there is a desire to retain more residential along Main Street, and the hope for that is to really build that mass to support the downtown businesses. So Dixon was kind of the division line, that if you want to have more mixed use with professional office and other, let that happen to the west, but somehow try to further encourage development around the existing structures east of Dixon. And there's also a lot of work ahead, trying to figure out, how do we protect those beautiful historic homes and encourage development around it? So it's not going to be demolished and see something that, it meets the need, but you've lost the character of the community. The next two major changes are 179th, south of 154th. That area currently is high-density residential. There is a desire to make that mixed use as well. So you could see a mix of uses, professional office, maybe a coffee shop, not competing, of course, with, I mean, Monroe Coffee. And then there was also a desire to consider making 154th a mixed use corridor as well. We have gotten a lot of comments that that really isn't desired. That wasn't what the thought was, but maybe to retain a couple of nodes. And so there was desire at the last community, or, yeah, community advisory group meeting, that maybe look at the Curry View Park, allowing that to have more of a mixed use. There was some concern that the park isn't being fully utilized. Maybe that would be a way of activating it. So I'm not sure what that looks like, but we are retaining that concept around Curry View. And then is there a way to add mixed use at the intersection of 179th and 154th? And then is there a way to add mixed use at the intersection of 179th and 154th? Any questions?
Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Kate, thank you. I am still confused by the mixed use on 154th idea. At the events that I went to with the public, I heard negative feedback about it as well.
Yep.
I don't I don't understand why it is making it making it through the next document.
It's not. If you've noticed, there's there is that not supported by public. We just wanted to bring it to you to explain where we've been. Where we are as of the last CAC meeting is really just trying to keep a node around the Curry View Park and at the intersection of 154th and 179th. So the rest of it would go away.
Got it. I I would also oppose the Curry Curry Park mixed use aspect. Thank you, guys. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Kate. So I'd like to respond to that if I might, since I'm a member of CAC. Initially, I felt exactly the same way. We all live, you know, there's what, three or four people on council here that all live in that neighborhood? And initially, I thought, oh, my gosh, absolutely not. You know, I don't want to ruin the family feel of 154th. And we did talk about it at length. At the last meeting. And I'm just going to be back here for now. And I have to say, there were a lot of comments from people online, and we did talk about it at length. And the idea would be to possibly provide some services for people in the Frylands. You know, certainly, people like us don't mind riding our bikes or walking or whatever to get to Pisano's or get to food down there or whatever, or go to Heather's. But also, people are feeling like there might need to be some services down there. Wouldn't that be nice? And so we were talking about the idea of maybe bringing a food truck to Curry View Park on a limited basis. It wouldn't be permanent, maybe once in a while. And just creating a little bit of buzz at that park, maybe. It just, you know, it is underutilized. I mean, certainly, there are people out playing lacrosse and doing different things with dogs. But I have to say, I felt exactly the same way. That's why I'm speaking. And as we talked about it, I sort of thought, maybe that would be kind of interesting to just create some community in that area. So that's a little bit of explanation, maybe that might help. But Kate's right, it's not written in. It it's just for discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher.
I'm talking a little bit about the mixed use in the neighborhoods. The yellow part that has the purple squares around where it says mixed use center support northeast residential area. Talked about for a little while. I would love to see those little nodes within these large neighborhoods. You know, those those neighborhood deli where you can go get, you know, cheese, meat, beer, wine, milk, ice cream for the kids, whatever it is, and just have that neighborhood feel. Of course, in my head, I pictured it as like, you know, maybe the 1950s or 1960s where the person who owns it's like, hey, I owe you or, you know, IOUs. You know, the kids came in, hey, the end of the day, you know, you end of the week, you owe this much. But I think it just would really kind of bring those those neighborhoods together. It's a place to meet, a place to go to. The the mixed use center still on that support northeast residential area. The idea of like a 7-Eleven, something like that, I guess, sounds doesn't sound like what I have pictured in my head. It's more of that locally owned coffee shop, deli, those kinds of things. And then talking about probably being okay with residential stuff, but having a hard time for actual jobs. Didn't that come up? Was not one of the things that we were talking about? And if we've talked about possibly expanding the industrial area. So it's at what, a 0.8% vacancy rate right now, which is incredibly low? And to get more jobs into this area? I want to know exactly how it looks. This is something that I kind of wanted to bring up of where that industrial area would expand to. I know we have the tourist commercial over there that has been over there for a long time. We haven't really got anything out of it and in the direction that we were going. So just curious if there'd be something over there or if it would be in a different place. Like, I don't actually have a location in my head of how it would work, but maybe something to look at to try and fire up some more of those living wage jobs and a 0.8% vacancy rates. Everything's really full there. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, at this point in time, we really cannot look at industrial in a different area. But I will note it for the next opportunity. The maximum and minimum that Alex talked about a little bit earlier, that's what went into the environmental impact statement. So if it is widely different than what you're seeing on this map, we don't have time and we don't have money to go back and do the required analysis. But I would be more than happy to add that to the the future. We need to have this conversation, because I'm not sure if you're aware, we cannot go west. That's floodplain, and so it's off the table for us. The the tourist commercial, you know, I I don't know what's going to happen with the airport and all of that. And will that change opportunities there? But we're going to have to do a show your work in five years. That might be an opportunity for the council to start thinking of, this isn't working. Can you please consider that? Noted.
So just a a couple of thoughts here, just on what I've heard. First, you talk about bakery. I think a few of you have been to Olympia with me. I'll just say San Francisco Street Bakery. You want a place that you live a couple blocks away? The what I'm hearing here is a change from being an auto oriented city primarily to being something more like I saw Redmond transition through when I was a planner there back in 99-ish, where they started actually putting in these notes and everything like that. People want to be able to walk to a coffee shop. You know, it's one of my complaints about where I live is that for me to, I mean, even to go to the Mexican food restaurant at the north end of Lake Tye, I I'm not wild about crossing Highway 2. It's not that far. When I when we go travel, I I walk that distance, no problem. But I don't like Highway 2, so I get in the car and I drive across Highway 2. You know, I it's one of the things that Kate and I talked about is that I wish that we could look at rezoning that property that that is between the gas station and in my neighborhood to have some sort of, you know, small local commercial node use there that the community could come out and go to. It's the same thing with the Hoserlands property that's right there. That's the Goldie Hawn house, some people. It it'd be nice if that area could be could be rezoned to, I don't know if it's neighborhood commercial or mixed use. But again, the idea that you've got attached housing and then that attached housing is ringing is ringing some small commercial something and not a Wendy's. I I don't eat any more fast food. I don't eat fast food here. I don't get excited about the new fast food places coming here. I just don't. Because all we're doing is catering to the passing by public. So I I I appreciate what I'm hearing here, and I I like the idea of of doing nodes wherever we can and allowing for that sort of thing, because that's how cities used to develop. It wasn't just Euclidian style zoning. Sorry, new planning term. We can talk later. Euclidian board. Anyway, it's the type of zoning where you just have residential and then commercial, and then it leads to an auto oriented. You got to go get in your car to go get milk rather than just, you know, walk across the street like it used to be. In terms of growth, and this gets a little bit to what I was talking about before, about us defining the direction we want to grow. Let me get up and be a little planner. I'm sorry. And that was one of the things that we were talking about before.
Thank you.
And that's why Alex is going to get all that done under budget and by next week, and it'll be approved. So thank you, Alex. Okay, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So what I'm pointing at, Alex, is southwest on the west side of 522 and south of the Monroe Snohomish Road. Sorry, I'm not going to call it because, you know, we're Monroe, so we're going to Monroe Snohomish Road. But we were taught, that's one of the reasons why we were looking at acquiring the water system here was so that we have the ability to develop this direction right here. And what we liked about that at the time was that you had visibility from 522. So you could have some sort of attached residential, but you could also have anything from car sales lots to, you know, something that somebody driving down 522 could see. Get off at the roundabout, go through the next roundabout, it's supposed to be a roundabout espresso, and then go up here and buy stuff. So what I heard was we need jobs. And what I heard was family wage jobs, right? I didn't hear industrial. I heard family wage jobs, and I heard jobs. Doesn't necessarily need to be industrial. One of the problems with industrial is we we get family wage jobs out of it, but not so much sales tax, right? And as a city, we ought to be looking at sales tax. And some of the industrial things require a lot more land than maybe we can provide for. And I know that Arlington is doing a lot of investment, I saw it on Sunday, in industrial stuff. They've got a lot more flat land around their airport and everything like that. So we we may be out of the competition for that. But, you know, you've got a lot of people who are living here, who are working here. And it might be nice to have professional office or something else that, you know, a grocery store or car lot where you're selling stuff that has visibility from 522. They could have the family wage jobs, and they could also maybe have some attached housing and stuff like that. So that was one of the things I was trying to talk about before was when the proposal was to grow out Roosevelt. It's like, we wanted to grow a different direction. Either side of 522 right here, I think, would provide the city with some of the things that you're looking at that you shared on that basis. For me, I wouldn't give up the tourist commercial stuff here. I mean, this is a major drive through Monroe. And if you're going to drive through Monroe, all they know about is what they see on 522 and Highway 2. And if all they see is industrial right here, they're going to forget about, you know, coming to the downtown and everything like that. So it's so high visibility that I I'd scratch my head about that. I think that's what we were trying to do with the tourist commercial, was try to try and have that interest to draw people into our community and then hopefully get them to spin off into other areas of our city. But those would be some thoughts based on what you could share with me.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
And based on your presentation at the board, it would it would be helpful when you're giving this brief if you had a laser.
Oh, okay.
And you could say, I'm talking about this area right here. I'm talking about 179th and 154th, et cetera, on the map. It would it'd be helpful instead of me going.
Yep, understood.
There, okay.
Just a thought.
Yes.
I appreciate that. What we'll do for the rest of this evening, if you need to point it out, feel feel free to to do what I just did and grab the mic. And I'm giving you permission.
Thank you.
So so I just wanted to share those thoughts. I think that some of what I shared there is a little bit outside of the scope of the current conversation.
Correct.
Right. But it gets into what I was talking about before with with updating that resolution that a former council did a long time ago, and then communicating that with the county and starting to lay the groundwork for how you want to see an amendment done, you know, five years out into the future, because that'll come really quickly. They started this comp planning process, what, three or four years, two years ago?
Yeah.
Two years ago.
Looking forward, Lance and I got here.
Yeah. So it 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 takes a while to go through this process, and you you just need to be persistent. And you need to communicate how it is you want to grow and everything like that. Okay. Councilmember Walker?
What did you say you're thinking about bringing that conversation back?
We need to talk about it, because it just came up tonight, but probably mid-year next year. It's not something that needs to happen now, because this needs to be closed before you can move on to the next thing. And it's just one of those things that, as I'm beginning to think about, you know, not being here in a year and a half, kind of some of the things that I think would be good to just sort of help folks set up for success, or at least to start thinking about.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Done if there's no more questions.
So next steps?
Next steps, Alex can tell you. He is quickly sending me all of the final drafts of the various chapters you have already seen. We are finishing up the final environmental impact statement. We got through the draft stage. We received comments. We provided feedback to those comments, and then we're going to start the hearing process. Planning Commission has agreed to have meetings every Monday in the month of September, so they can get through all the chapters, ask questions. Their public hearing is now tentatively scheduled for September 30th. It's the last Monday of the month. During that time, I will be also starting to introduce it with the city council in October. September 12th is a big day for us. I will be submitting all of the documents, the utility plans to the Department of Commerce. They require a 60-day review period. We've actually already been receiving comments from certain agencies that have been reaching out. They're like, I don't care where you're at. I just want to look at it now. So we have some of their comments already. So then 60 days, planning commission, public hearing, environmental, the environmental impact statement analysis will also be given to you. That's part of your decision making background criteria information. And then we have a public hearing scheduled for the council. I want to say it's your second meeting in November. And then I have you taking final action at your last meeting in December. And then I will be submitting everything to Future Sound Regional Council and Department of Commerce for their review and hopeful approval.
All right, thank you. There'll be a test on that in three minutes.
Alex, I just want to make sure, is there anything else that you wanted to cover?
I think the only thing I would say is that the the map that Kate showing right now is it's kind of like a soft future land use map. You're seeing big, you're seeing kind of seeing the big moves. The next map you'll see is a parcel based map, which will actually be your your draft future land use map. And that'll be inserted into the land use element of the comprehensive plan. So the presentation tonight was to show you these these kind of big changes. The next step is to take those dotted lines off the map and actually, you know, apply those to the the draft future land use map. So this tells you where it's at. The next one will be kind of the specific future land use map that'll go into the draft comprehensive plan. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I I just wanted to thank, I've been on the CAC as well with Councilmember Beaumont and Alex and Kate and staff. They've just done a lot of work, and it's evident in what you're seeing before you. And this is just a taste. So I just want to publicly thank you and staff for all that you've done.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
I agree. It's all been just a wonderful process. And I feel like we've really done a good job of getting out in the community and soliciting input. I feel like this is a really good document with a lot of good feedback incorporated. One of my favorite parts of this, you know, 114-page document, is pages like 38. Where where what are Monroe's assets and issues? Where do you live? Where do you work? Where do you gather or hang out? You know, then we have another page that basically where I would like to go on a bus. This is really great information, and it will continue to be great information. So thank you. It's a wonderful document, and thanks for all your hard work. And that goes for the entire department. And Alex, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be item 8.3 fireworks. Mr. McCorkle.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council.
Can you tilt your microphone up just a little bit?
Yes, I can. All right, let's try that again. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Today, I will be I will be providing you with a presentation on fireworks. This was an agenda item that was requested a few meetings ago. So I'm happy to be presenting it with you here today. Next slide. So just going over the contents, what we're going to be covering in this presentation today. I'm going to start off by contextualizing the topic a little bit, looking at fireworks complaints and police calls for service in the city of Monroe. We will then move into comparing state regulations with what the city of Monroe currently regulates in its firework policy. I'll touch base on some mitigation alternatives and then conclude by looking at firework displays considerations as well. And then the ultimate goal of, sorry, Jody, the ultimate goal of today's discussion is simply to discuss and provide comments and direction to the mayor and staff surrounding how to proceed with fireworks. Next slide, please. So to provide some general context going into this policy issue, in 2022, the Washington State Fire Marshal's Office received 508 reports from hospitals and local fire agencies regarding firework related incidents. Of all of those reports, about 310 were fires and 198 were reported as injuries. Additionally, the following year, in 2023, the Washington State Patrol further estimated that fire incidents caused by fireworks contributed to about $12 million in property damage throughout Washington state, which would obviously make fireworks a significant worry for the state Fire Marshal's Office. Now, slightly shifting gears, given that larger Washington state context, looking at the city of Monroe. at the city of Monroe, the police department has historically tracked annual calls for service regarding fireworks. So you can see on the left hand of the screen there, staff actually took these reports and translated them into calls for service per thousand populations, so that way you can get a trend of the frequency of calls over time.
Liam, I'm going to stop you for a second. Councilmember Gamble, I'll call on you when we're done with the presentation, unless you've got something right now that, is there a?
Specific to the data that he just brought up from the state?
Perfect, perfect, go for it.
Yeah, I just was wondering, is that data broken out, the state numbers that you provided in the aggregate? Do we have the ability to look at the location of those, of those calls for fires, and whether or not fireworks were banned in those areas?
I can definitely inquire further with the state Fire Marshal's Office. These numbers were just in the public release that the state Fire Marshal provided.
That'd be good data. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So we'll, we'll, Liam will look into that material. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Perfect. So given that, on your screen, on the left hand, you can see those firework calls for, broken out in two thousand calls, sorry, excuse me, firework calls per thousand population by year. So you see in, starting out in 2016, we had about eleven calls for service, which equated to a calls per thousand of about point six. And then moving all the way into 2024, we had about twenty-nine calls for service, which equated to a calls per thousand population of one point three nine. Now, the city also tracks firework complaints through the client, our client relation management system, Monroe Listens, and you can see a similar story there. In 2022, Monroe Listens recorded two complaints, 2023, three complaints, and in 2024, there were eight reported complaints there. So hopefully that gives you a good overview of the complaints and calls for service that are tracked throughout the city of Monroe, surrounding the Fourth of July. Next slide, please. Now, moving into Washington State regulations, the revised Code of Washington, Chapter seventy point seven seven outlines state law regarding fireworks, and provides major regulations surrounding permitting, prohibited classifications of fireworks, and also sale and discharge times. So starting with permitting, Washington State requires that any person, except for a few exceptions, who desire to engage in the manufacturing, importation, sale, or use of fireworks, must send in an application and receive a fireworks license from the Washington State Patrol. With that, there are three main exceptions to this rule, as you might be able to note. The first one is possession or use of consumer fireworks that are lawfully purchased at retail, also the purchase and use of certain wildlife and agricultural fireworks for the use of, by the government, and also purchase of consumer fireworks by religious or private organizations for religious-specific purposes. Those are the three exceptions to that. In addition to that license, the RCW requires that anyone seeking to participate in the manufacturing, importation, sale, or transportation of fireworks must also obtain a local permit issued by the local city, so City of Monroe or the county. The application for this permit must be routed through the local fire official, who would submit findings and a recommendation to the city. But as long as the application meets all of the state and local guidelines, the city must issue this permit. The city is allowed to establish any fees to cover the legitimate cost, of course. Additionally, the revised Code of Washington also regulates the types of fireworks that are authorized. So while the revised Code of Washington does authorize the use and sale of certain consumer fireworks, there are certain classifications that are regulated by the state of Washington's, those being listed on your screen. So skyrockets, missile-type rockets, firecrackers, firecrackers, salutes, and chasers are all considered illegal in the state of Washington. The Washington State Patrol's Office actually did create a one-page infographic that helps outline what fireworks are legal in Washington State and which ones are illegal. I've included that in your agenda packets for you to review. It's a very good infographic, and it is one that the city of Monroe has used previously in our own public outreach and information efforts. Another and final major area that the revised Code of Washington regulates regarding fireworks is sale and discharge times. I'm not going to list them all out for you, but you can see them on your screen. And essentially, outside of those times that you see on your screen, the sale or purchase and use and discharge of fireworks is illegal outside of those times for any consumer fireworks. Now, with all of this in mind, there is one major caveat, and that is that if the city wished, which is authorized by the RCW, to create regulations that are more restrictive than what is authorized or outlined, rather, in the revised Code of Washington, the city must wait one year after passage of a local ordinance before that ordinance becomes effective. So this will require obviously some planning out in advance, if any ordinance is passed by the city in order to further restrict what the revised Code of Washington already provides in terms of regulations for fireworks. Next slide, please. So quickly comparing to the city of Monroe's regulations, the city of Monroe initially codified local firework regulations in the municipal code in 2005. This ordinance largely adopted the Washington, the revised Code of Washington by reference. However, in 2016, via ordinance zero zero six, 2016, in response to local concerns surrounding the use of fireworks, the city council adopted that ordinance to further restrict allowable sale and discharge times. You can see the adjusted times on your screen, which, as you can note, are more restrictive than what the revised Code of Washington outlines. Beyond the Monroe Municipal Code, the city also has historically engaged in public information efforts to educate about firework safety. This includes the creation of a webpage, also news alerts, and communication through Monroe this week. Next slide, please. So with that, as provided in the RCW, the city may adopt fireworks regulations that are more restrictive than those provided in Washington State law. Staff reviewed cities across Washington State to compile a list of potential other mitigation factors. A basic list of those mitigation factors are on your screen. To go over them briefly, the most common, potentially not surprisingly, is for cities to adopt a complete ban on consumer fireworks. So as the name implies, a complete ban on consumer fireworks would eliminate the lawful sale and discharge of fireworks by most residents within city limits. It should be noted that many communities and cities that have instituted a complete ban have accompanied this ban with a public fireworks display, which I will get into those considerations in a moment. Not going to go over the full list, because it is a very long list of cities that have banned consumer fireworks on a large scale, but also included in your agenda packets, I've created a list of selected counties in Washington State, Western Washington State, that have ended up going for a complete ban as a mitigation measure. Another option would be a partial ban on select fireworks. So a few municipalities, the most relevant example being the city of Tequila, have identified and banned specific uses of fireworks or specific classifications of fireworks. In the city of Tequila, for example, in 2022, they identified aerial fireworks as having the most extreme negative externalities. So they took that policy, and they banned all aerial fireworks while still continuing to allow ground-based fireworks for use throughout the city. Another mitigation factor, or the third mitigation factor found, was emergency firework bans. So municipalities including Mercer Island, Leavenworth, Thurston County, and Watacom County have all adopted ordinances that would authorize a authorized official, typically being a fire marshal, to declare an emergency ban on fireworks during extreme situations, such situation being droughts or extreme fire danger. It should be noted that the RCW currently does not have a law, one way or another, regulating how emergency fire bans work. So if the city decides to pursue this mitigation factor further, further conversations should be had before deciding to go through that route. The last major mitigation factor that staff found is something that the city already did in 2016, which is varying sale and discharge times. However, the city may continue to consider further restricting the sale and discharge times even further. For example, the city may even consider completely restricting the times that the sale of discharge, that the sale of fireworks can be authorized, but still allowing certain discharge times for fireworks to be discharged. Other jurisdictions that have varied discharge times in attempt to mitigate these fireworks externalities include Puyallup, Walla Walla, and Clark County. Now, obviously, this is not a comprehensive list of all the ways fireworks can be mitigated. There are other mitigation measures, such as increasing fines, furthering public information efforts, or creating public firework displays that would hopefully discourage the use of personal or consumer fireworks. But this hopefully gives a good overview of the mitigation factors that are most common in other municipalities. Next slide, please. Now with that, I wanted to make a final point on public firework displays. Since public firework displays are typically integral to firework mitigation discussions, staff just wanted to provide some initial considerations for displays tonight for your review and consideration. The first and most pressing of which potentially being locations. So most vendors for firework displays will typically require an eight-hundred-foot drop zone where fireworks can safely land and be discharged. However, although your council packets do identify two locations as potential locations, park staff did conduct additional analysis and found that no public parks within the city of Monroe would be suitable to the requirements of a public display. So if the city decided to continue with seeking a public firework display, we would need to coordinate with the county or other private entities if wanting to pursue those displays. The next consideration is cost. So staff has provided initial cost estimates for you on the screen. A firework show between about fifteen to twenty minutes, just a basic firework show, typically costs municipalities about seventeen thousand dollars. It was also estimated that conducting this kind of show would require overtime of sixty hours for both the police department and public works and parks. And then there would also be, of course, miscellaneous expenses, such as permits, barricades, signage, unaccounted-for expenses, et cetera. And you can see that a very basic fireworks display show would equate to a total cost estimate of about thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, some jurisdictions have also considered using drone shows as a potential alternative. However, to note there, we would need to conduct further analysis of potential locations where drone shows could even be authorized throughout the city. And it should also note, be noted, that drone shows are typically considerably more expensive than a traditional firework display would be with just a drone show technology itself of about fifteen minutes costing upwards of forty thousand dollars. So that is an important consideration to have. The city should also, if considering a public firework display, consider neighboring firework displays that are accessible to residents in the area. Once again, there is a long list. Other localities in Snohomish County with public fireworks displays on the Fourth of July include Everett, Arlington, Edmonds, Darrington, Marysville, Mountain Lake Terrence, and then just outside in King County, the city of Carnation, as well as the Evergreen Speedway typically puts on a fireworks display show. So with all that in mind, once again, we just wanted to put all this public display information out there in case it factors into your conversations tonight or at a later date. And with that, we'll go to the next slide. And that largely concludes my presentation. The requested action here tonight is discussion only, provide comment, and give direction to the mayor and staff regarding how to proceed with the topic. So with that, I will hand it back over to the mayor.
All right, thank you. And I, you know, I'm, I'm open to discussion and everything like that. I also know that in the past, the council has not wanted us to do anything with fireworks. So I just want to make certain that it's understood that if I have seven council members or five council members that don't want to do anything other than get an update, I understand that. So we're looking for what your additional thoughts might be, if you want more information, that kind of stuff. I just need to hear that. And I think that's it. Go ahead, and Councilmember Beaumont?
I am extremely grateful to staff and council for the opportunity to discuss this issue. I know it's incredibly unpopular in Monroe, and I think, what, a year and a half ago when I was first sworn in, we discussed this at council. And I think Councilmember Scarborough and I were probably the only two people that were in favor of at least looking at it. So I know it's late, and I know this took an incredible amount of staff time. It's a very well-done presentation, and I appreciate all of your time to talk about this. So just a couple of things. I would like to know what the restriction is at Lake Tye that keeps that from being a place where we can have public firework display? Is it just the geographic area?
Thank you. Yes, we don't have any acreage where we could hold a safe public display, when you have to factor in spectators, parking, park facilities, the lake, environmental, because basically, we considered Lake Tye as far as acreage. There isn't a place, the artificial turf field.
Okay.
Doesn't, you know, it's not very compatible with that stuff. And then you, then you flip over to Sky River Park, and you've got the apartments, and then you've got the trees. It's typically, we're all concerned about fires. So we just don't have the space for something like that.
Okay.
So I think, you know, there's the existing public space as far as the fairgrounds that, you know, they put on a display, but, you know, they've got, they've got more of a setup for that as far as, you know, the hard surface, and, you know, where they can have a safe area for people to be, that sort of thing.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I did have a conversation with, with Liam about, like, the drones, and that's something I think that, that financially, you need to vet that out to see if that's possible as far as if, if the city were, were to look into some sort of a public display.
Right.
You know, whether that's something you pay for one shot a year, or whether, whether you want to consider investing in purchasing something like that, and see how many years, you know, you know, if there's a cost benefit, you know, to, to do something like that.
Right. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. So some of the things that I want to say tonight are just, I would like you to just listen. A lot of people have talked to me about fireworks, and that it's a problem in the community. And again, I understand that this is an unpopular position, and it is not widely supported. And I do appreciate the opportunity to speak for some of the people that have come to me and complained about fireworks in our community. And I do have some things I want to say, and I ask your grace in, in letting me say them. The discussion tonight, for me, is guided by Imagine Monroe, which is that we are creating a safe place for all, where people feel they belong and they feel at home. And in our Freyland's community in particular, people do not feel safe, and they do not feel that they belong, and they are not feeling at home because their homes are in danger. Many people leave town on the Fourth of July because of the noise and the thick sulfur smoke that's in our neighborhood. And if they have dogs, if they have veterans in their family or elderly people living in their home, it, it really does feel like a war zone. And so when I think about the effect that every year, it seems to be getting worse, and I think about our Imagine Monroe vision, it just does not fit. And it seems, you know, smoking, screen time for youth, all of these things, you know, when you know better, you do better. And we have all these neighboring cities who are looking at this and making a decision to not allow it. And again, I know I could be, you know, labeled unpatriotic. I know it's fun for kids to run around with sparklers, but we're talking about bombs going off at three AM, Tenoriff bombs in the community that are rattling our windows, setting off car alarms, you know, just really creating a lot of terror, frankly, in some, some people. And we're just, it's not being enforced. People are, you know, setting off fireworks days in advance of the Fourth, days after the Fourth. And it's just, people are disobeying the law. And I feel that, like anything else, you know, maybe it's helpful to take fireworks out of the discussion, you know, if we're dealing with another issue, for instance, where a small group of people disobeying the law, you know, forcing people to leave their homes for a day or days over the Fourth of July, you know, participating in illegal activities. We would not hesitate to take action. But for some reason, fireworks is just, you know, this, I don't know, misguided patriotism, but we're allowing entire neighborhoods to become war zones and driving people out of their homes on the Fourth of July that want to just have a backyard barbecue and enjoy their, their time. And it's impossible to do so. And, you know. And, you know, if it's on a weekday, people have to go to sleep and get up and work the next day. They simply can't. You know, they're drugging their pets. They're, it's just, you know, I've lived here since 2005, always in the Frylands, and it's always been noisy. It's always been, oh my gosh, you know. And sometimes it's beautiful because you look up and you see these fireworks, but something's happened where people are detonating, you know, these, they're bombs, you know, for lack of a better term. They're fireworks that are not legal fireworks. And I just feel like, you know, a lot of people in my neighborhood are being held hostage, you know. I just feel like we are just digging our heels in and saying, yes, we're going to continue to do this no matter what the harmful behavior is. So, you know, my grand plan was that July 4th, 2025 falls on a Friday. It's a music in the park, our first music in the park. I don't know if we would still do that because it is a federal holiday, but that was my dream. It's like, hey, that works out perfectly, you know, we could have a public fireworks display after the band finishes at Music in the Park. Obviously, that's not viable, and that's okay. But I do appreciate the, I, you know, just the chance to talk about this and share my views. And again, I'm trying to tie it back to Imagine Monroe where I don't feel like we are providing a safe place for all on the Fourth of July, and people are being driven away from their homes instead of feeling at home. And I will end it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else? Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Thank you. You bring up some great points. This is a tough thing to get through. So enforcement is one of the big things, talking about bombs, you know, that we all know that those are illegal. And enforcement on, you had mentioned if it was any other problem, then we would go after it. Unfortunately, it's enforcement on that single day when people are already busy trying to enforce or put fires out or do whatever they do. I want, I just wish people wouldn't be rude, honestly. Like, get together with your neighbors, have a good Fourth of July celebration. There's no reason to light off bombs and car alarms and scare the crap out of people and rattle these houses. What I want to stay away from is people don't feel safe because I think if we start going down that road, then we're going to start getting rid of dogs also. Dogs is one of the things that you brought up. Dogs bite a lot of people in our nation, like 4.5 million a year, 300 alone just in the city of Seattle annually. So I don't want to get into the, oh, this could be dangerous for somebody, let's do a, write a law or a moratorium against them or whatever we are wanting to do. I think it just kind of comes down to, I mean, we've talked about traffic cameras, we've talked about all these things. It's just, I'm just tired of people being rude. Like, would you please respect somebody's property? Would you please respect the streets that you, that they live on, whether you live there or not? Don't speed down it. Don't set off a bunch of fireworks. Don't let your dog run around and bite kids, or adults for that matter. I don't like getting bit by dogs. So I think that's just my main pitch is just, would you just talk to your neighbors and just not be rude to your neighbor or the area that you happen to be in at that time? So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
Great points you bring up, both of them. And one that you've brought up is the fireworks going off at all the times that are outside what is legal in Monroe. You know, it's two or three days before, and it's big booms and bombs and not just fireworks. Great point. It's almost unpatriotic, quote-unquote, unless you see what it traumatizes, how it traumatizes animals and some people. Is there a possibility that in your thought process of having a public one on the land west of Lake Tye, you know, according with those people, it's just, it's usually a field whether it may or may not be planted, that we might be able to have the fireworks there? If that's a possibility, but that's all I have.
You can go on, Mr. Sun.
Thank you. I have a story about that. So, yeah, so this was about, oh, maybe 12 years ago, something like that. Which, what was that? It was a, it was a youth tournament that we used to have called Triple Crown, and it was Memorial Day weekend or something like that. Anyways, they got permission, they wanted to do a fireworks display. And again, Lake Tye Park, there isn't a place where you can safely have a overhead display in the park. And so they contacted the property owner at the time, West Incorporated, and the property owner agreed to it. So they did some sort of a small display. And, oh boy, it was reverberating, I'm not pronouncing the word correctly, off the buildings, all the houses, that fence and all the houses. I felt sorry for them one night. And then also, there were at least one, if not a few, small fires that started in the field. Unfortunately, it was May, and, you know, they put them out and stuff. So that's kind of how that went. So I don't know if that's really ideal, so.
Thank you.
Let me tell you a story.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Walker.
I want to say thank you, Councilmember Beaumont, for asking for this to be brought up at a study session. I think that the citizens have given a lot of comment that warrant a continued discussion on it. I don't really subscribe to the idea that issues are put to bed with council for five years or 10 years or so, especially if we get a good amount of residents asking for there to be at least, for there to be a discussion around it at least. So thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for the points that you made. On this topic, I find myself in a funny predicament because I'm actually, I would support a ban personally because my toddler was woken up multiple times, both Fourth of Julies by the fireworks. My dog, even with two pills of his anxiety medications, cannot calm down from the fireworks. I live in the Frylands. During my campaign, I talked to a lot of people in the Frylands in particular who had children with sensory issues that were asking if something be done about it. So there's definitely, I would say that there's definitely enough, enough sentiment out there to warrant this to be in our mind continuously. So while I feel that way personally, it's a predicament because I have questions about the enforceability of something like this. Looking at Liam's presentation, I was surprised to see that we do limit it to two days a year or those two, Fourth of July and New Year, because there's 16 Seahawks games and unfortunately, some 49ers games where people do fireworks anyway. And it still happens, and I just don't see how something like this could be enforced anyway. So I don't know if that just puts our services, our law enforcement services, in a tougher spot because it's illegal, they have to be enforcing it. I don't know how that works. So in my mind, the question kind of went to mitigation efforts that we can take because, like Councilmember Fisher was saying, it's the rude people, unfortunately. The comments on social media always seem to be around, gosh, why are they starting on the second already? Or it's the fifth, like, this is ridiculous. So if, I think if we could hone in on, I don't know if fines can be increased past $1,000. I don't know what kind of reporting mechanisms might be useful. Maybe that's in the public information, a public information campaign. I do think, or at least from feedback, I've heard that there are bigger fireworks being used now. I don't know if that's just people feeling that way because they don't like fireworks, but I've heard it from a lot of people that the bombs are bigger these days, I don't know. But all that to say, I guess, I oppose a ban, but I would really like to see what we can do to evolve our enforceability methods. And, yeah, thank you again for bringing it up, and I thank you guys for speaking on it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, it's kind of similar to what was just stated. I mean, you guys have heard me several times on this one. I, you know, I don't get it. You know, I feel like it's lighting a $100 bill on fire or whatever, but, you know, when we, Councilmember Beaumont, you bring about where everybody belongs, everybody feels safe. And I think we all are passionate about that, but it definitely, at times, it's like, well, so do the people that like to have community by having fireworks displays in the neighborhood, do they get disenfranchised if we take action? Are they not feel like that they belong because they can't do that? I mean, it gets really, I mean, you can apply that to any, you know, activity, you know, across the board. And I really default to, you know, just the concept of, so, you know, the answer to our issues, which most of the issues that I heard from all the council members that were really firmly in support, your major issue was with stuff that's already illegal. So how does passing a law that, I mean, it's already illegal? So we would punish those that are going by the rules? And then, you know, we've dug into this a lot of different times. You guys know I'm crazy about the data. And every time we dig into the data and we look at different cities that show that have bans, that's why I asked that question upfront. I truly would love to see, you know, when we look at those different fires, you know, that are occurring, and we should be able to see, well, does it have any impact, you know, from the safety, truly from that safety question that you posed, Councilmember Beaumont? It's really that sort of, if we're trying to mitigate, what's the best way to mitigate? Is it with an outright ban? Or are we having a better, are we doing better by mitigating through education and trying to control the hours and really try to, from that perspective? And the other side that we've had before is showing where the money, you know, goes for, you know, the purchases that are made within the city. Some of the 501(c)(3)'s, Clean the School, if I'm not mistaken, or at least it was at one point in time, that go to programs to help exactly what, support our charter as a city. So I think you can make the argument on either side. And so I really just default back to, we've got something, you know, already in place, and we probably should be doing a better job of enforcing. Can we? That's another, you know, that's another question. Do we have it even, you know, within us to do it? And then we hear a lot, well, man, the sentiment is totally negative. I hear a lot of the other, I hear the negative too. So maybe, you know, we've reached, if we've got that much sentiment, why don't, is this something for an advisory vote? Why don't we ask the question and truly get the sentiment from, you know, the general voting population within the city if this is something that everybody feels strongly about so that we can stop, you know, dancing around the issue because, you know, we look at data that we get this through calls. Well, shoot, we got 18 calls. Well, you know what? I saw 18 comments on a Facebook post, this is no lie, right? Asking for people to call in to make complaints because they wanted to, you know, to get it lodged. So did we just see that spike because of that? Well, if we take an advisory vote, we could get an honest reaction from the voting public around, hey, are you in support of, you know, a ban within the city limits of, you know, lighting up fireworks and selling of fireworks? Maybe it's that, maybe it's time to get exactly that. That's, or my, because I'm, I'm still not, until I see something, some sort of piece of data that pushes me in the way that like, hey, we're definitely putting in jeopardy the, you know, the safety of our, of the population, or just something that would push me, but I haven't seen anything in the 12-plus years and the half a dozen times we've done it. And we have been consistent on going back and looking at it and say, hey, maybe there's new data, maybe there's new data. Is this nothing to outweigh the other side? But that would be a big one. I mean, if we have the, you know, if we have the majority of the population, you know, 60% or more, or whatever that number, it just would be good to know. That's all I have.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna, I'll come to Councilmember Scarborough in just a second. So I do appreciate this coming forward, Councilmember Beaumont. I've been in a number of these conversations, which is why I recognize that, so one of the concerns that I have about the discussion tonight is I don't want to find ourselves in a, in a place where staff is pulling together a whole lot of information and the council already knows as a majority that they're not going to do, you know, do anything one way or another. So I know that Councilmember Gamble requested some additional information. Whether or not we can get that is one thing, but what I want to avoid is doing a bunch of data requests when, at the end of the day, you know that you're not going to want to make a change one way or another. So as we continue discussing this, and that's what I kind of intended by my comments earlier, we've done this before where we've done an update. If you're asking for information, let's just make certain you're, we're asking for information for a purpose and not asking for information because we don't want to say the hard thing tonight, which is, yes, we want to do something, or no, we don't want to do something. Okay? So that's the one thing I want to ask. So I'm one of those people that I have a hard time with Fourth of July here. When I was younger, I remember fireworks. Fireworks were smaller. Okay, I, you know, narrative, I don't, I don't know. When I wanted to go see big fireworks, like I see lunch today here in Monroe, I went down to the Capitol in DC because that's where they were. I think part of the problem here is that we have the tribes here in the area, and we have online shopping that didn't exist, at least where I lived, where you're getting things that are illegal. You know, Jason was right, Councilmember Gamble's right. The problem isn't the sparklers and stuff like that that I was raised with. The problem is with the big things that go up and go boom in the sky and put out a whole bunch of sulfur and things like that. It's the litter that ends up on my house. It's the, it's the burning embers that could set that pyramidalis on fire next to my house. You know, it's, it's me waking up in the morning with the smoke and the sulfur that gets on my eyes. And I wear contacts, so for a day or two, I'm not wearing my contacts. It's me going to sleep at night and having to breathe that air in. Luckily, I have an air conditioner now, but at one point I didn't. So it was sleeping in a warm room while things were going bang outside. And it, you know, you talk about safety, you know, you've also got comfort, you know, quality of life. And I think that, to me, that's what Tammy's talking about with where everybody feels they belong. You know, if you're exercising your rights and you're doing something like, yeah, I mean, I should be able to drive my car fast. Well, if driving my car fast is putting out a lot of noise and putting, you know, maybe making people feel uncomfortable, because you don't need to walk in front of the crosswalk in front of me if you can see me coming, you know, there's a reason why we're here. You know, you make laws and I enforce laws, right? So the next question then for me is a fireworks ban, will that really do anything? And I know from experience here and experience in other walks of my life that it's hard for PD to go out and enforce a fireworks ban. You know, by the time you go out and investigate something, the thing, the evidence is gone. And that's the whole point. It goes up and boom, it's gone, right? So it then comes back to the next argument, which you've got, you've got people that are out there being rude. They're launching stuff they shouldn't be launching, which comes back then to public education. And it comes back to talking to your neighbors and telling them, look, it's Fourth of July, I get it. Buy your stuff locally here in Monroe, buy things that are legal, and respect your neighbors because they have a right to live here too. Pick up the garbage when it falls on the street and on the cars. Buy, buy little tickets for them to wash their cars. You know, we did that one year when our kids decided to launch off fireworks a decade or more ago. We went out and bought car wash tickets for all of our neighbors. You know, I felt horrible, but we went out and swept stuff up and everything. It was the last year that we did that, so. But I feel for exactly what you've said. Because I, Laura and I will, you know, if we've got a three-day weekend or something like that, we'll go somewhere else just, just because it's hard. And I always forget that New Year's Eve, we allow fireworks. So for me, I like to go to sleep early and all of a sudden, there's boom, you know, halfway through a REM cycle. So I hear what you're saying and everything, and I think that our big problem is the fact that there's access to fireworks that didn't seem to exist when I was younger. And putting an end to that, putting a change to that, to me, is a state-level issue. It's going to the state of Washington and finding a way to stop the trafficking of these larger fireworks to, you know, to tribal properties and online and things like that. I just don't know how you get a handle on it except for the public information that we've been doing recently. So just sharing with you my thoughts. I appreciate everybody listening. I had Councilmember Scarborough, Councilmember Gamble, I think you have your hand up. Yes, I had to turn off my computer, it's running out of batteries. Did I see another flag go up? Okay, and then Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Hanford, and then Beaumont. So let me, let me write those down real quick. Councilmember Scarborough, Councilmember Gamble, Councilmember Hanford, and then Councilmember Beaumont. All right, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Okay. In light of some of the things that have been said, one thing for Councilman Walker, it appears that the only way you can do anything is to it, it, it appears that the only way you can do anything is to put an all-out ban on it and then live with the people that don't care. You can try to find them, you can try and get them, but you probably won't, so it's probably worthless. But at that point, you said in city limits, if you do it and get caught, you get this. So I'm not sure that's the answer, and I, and I agree with Councilman Gamble too, that maybe if we do a questionnaire to the citizens of Monroe, the city limits citizens, and you get 50 or over 50% of them say ban them, then maybe we have a better reason to go ahead and do it. Not that it's the best answer, it's just confirmed by the vote of the people.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, get off to you. Sorry. Yeah, I think, um, that's, uh, I, I wanted to address you, you had said something about, you know, hey, making sure before we ask for, you know, for data if our minds already made up or it was kind of insinuated there. I don't want to be clear that the ask for data is, we, because we've studied this so much, is for some piece of data to show the other side of why, um, we should make the change. Because everything up until this point, we've looked at other cities that have bans, they have higher call volume, they have higher incidents than us. So there hasn't been data, that's why I'm saying, well, hey, um, maybe there is something that, uh, that shows within the data from the state that you guys started with, well, maybe we have less or there's less fires in those, those areas because that's the data that was presented to council today. Trying to get something that maybe goes in line with, with what we're, what we're, uh, we're advocating for. That's the other reason why, hey, advisory vote, like, look, if, if we can't find anything, because there, if there's a strong desire, then it's still, it's a vote of, you know, vote of the people, they say, hey, we really just don't want this, it's 60% of the population or whatever, well then, hey, maybe we should, maybe we should get rid of it. But right now, I don't have a data point, even, I've already said, like, I, I could care less, be quite honest with you. I wouldn't mind not having stuff all over the place either, but I also, just because I don't like something, doesn't mean that, that, you know, that individual shouldn't have the ability to do something that's completely legal unless we outlaw it. I just, this, this doesn't sit well with me.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Beaumont, and the discussion we've had so far. I concur with a lot of what's already been said. I think back, uh, several years ago, and I know that at least two, possibly three of my, uh, teenagers, uh, were able to earn their way, uh, to, uh, mission trip or youth group camps because of the 501(c)(3)'s that they volunteered their time with, uh, doing that many years ago. And so I think of that, um, I think of, um, I think of the many times where neighborhoods are getting together and barbecuing and having, you know, kids are playing and running and they're, they're, uh, having community together, uh, with fireworks. I think of the time back in 16 when, when we made it more objective, we looked at all the data and we changed it so that you can only do fireworks on the day of, both days, to try and curb some of that. I think of the, I think of the time, uh, every year after the Fourth of July, when someone on council says they want to hear the data, we want to look into, um, because it was concerning and the noise and stuff like that, uh, and it's brought back to us every year. And I, I, in my heart, I believe that I come to the meeting every year with an open mind that if there's data showing that, like, we need to make a change, that I would do the right thing and make that change. And, uh, I believe, like Councilmember Gamble said, comparing the different cities and things like that, I'm sure last year, if we look at last year's presentation, um, it's kind of the same thing. And so, you know, if, if we had that for this year's presentation, maybe it would show the same thing, I'm not sure, but it's important that we ask for the data. And it doesn't, doesn't matter necessarily that maybe the majority want fireworks or don't want fireworks, but we need to be able to ask for that data and have it provided so that we as council can make informed decisions. And, uh, so all that said, I would perfectly, I would support an advisory vote. I mean, if we're going to do an advisory vote on traffic cameras or anything else, then pretty sure the cost of an advisory vote for fireworks is going to be close to nil. So why not?
I think that's it. Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Well, I am very pleased with how this discussion is going. I also support an advisory vote, and I think that that's where we will get the data, data that we need. I think there's a lot we can do that we're not doing, rather than just saying we're banning them. You know, I don't, I've lived in this community, I'm certainly not in, you know, I wasn't born and raised here, but I've lived here since 2005. And I don't ever remember, I mean, I know there are, there's information provided on social media, and I think there's something inserted in bills, I don't know, but I think we could do a much better job of stating, you know, what, what the rules and regs are, letting people know that they're going to be enforced. I don't think we do enough of that. And Chief Jolly's not here to, to weigh in, but I know that they are overtaxed and they have a lot going on on the Fourth of July, but maybe if we do a better public education campaign about what is allowed and what is not allowed, and that, you know, violators will be, um, you know, we're going to take action in a way that maybe we haven't before. I don't feel like we're really serious about it. I think we kind of, um, I don't know, I just don't recall there being a concerted effort to elevate this issue in the community and say, we really care about this, there's illegal activity going on, we're watching, we're not going to allow it anymore, and maybe this next Fourth of July, we just come up with some kind of a campaign and do more. That would, that would help. And I also am very, very pleased that we're talking about this. I appreciate everyone's time, everyone's tired. Thank you so much, because this is important to me, and, um, I realize we have a lot of opinions up here. I'm grateful for all of you. And if, if we can just let people know we're talking about it, which we're doing right now, I feel good about that because I feel like we're listening. And a lot of people, this is a concern for them, and I'm very proud of us, and thank you, Liam, for the great presentation. Thank you for your time, everyone, because this is important to me, because it's important to our community. So, thank you. I would support an advisory vote.
Councilmember Walker?
I'd support an advisory vote.
Councilmember Fisher?
Um, so in my past life, I worked for a fire department down in South King County. They have a huge, they, and the, the city is close to, uh, a reservation where you can get fireworks. And they have a huge sign when you go into town year-round that says, if it goes up or blows up, it's illegal. Made zero difference. Zero difference. It was crazy down there on Fourth of July. Every single year, I think of the 30 years I was down there. So I don't, I don't think it makes a difference unless you can, you can actually, um, go after the people that are doing these things and enforce it, um, which is a lot of money and staff hours. And the fire, I, I was thinking of maybe a firework permit process. If you're going to let a firework through your neighborhood, you got to let your neighbors know 30 days in advance, um, and then I think it would be more enforceable, because if there's fireworks going off, somebody calls the police, they show up, you have a permit. I mean, you can see fireworks all over the ground, you don't have to catch them in the act. And they'd be like, do you have a fireworks permit? And they'd be like, well, no, I don't. And they'd be like, okay, well, we're enforcing this, you can't let fireworks off anymore, um, without actually making it illegal. And huge surprise, I am against an advisory vote.
Okay, so, um, we will bring back, so what I, I appreciate the clarification, I, we're going to bring back the information. So just to allay people's fears, both Councilmember Hanford and also Councilmember Gamble, again, staff has other projects also, and I just want to make certain to the extent that I can, that in these meetings, I know what we're bringing back, because what I don't want is bring me a rock. So that's the idea of bring me a rock, we bring you a rock, and you say, nice rock, bring me another rock. I, I want to make certain that when we walk out of the meetings, we know what our marching orders are so that we can bring you the rock you're looking for, and then you can make your next decision. What I'm hearing is I'm hearing a majority of people expressing an interest in, in doing an advisory vote. I'm not going to ask for a motion on that tonight unless somebody wanted to make that motion, um, simply because it's late and I'd like folks to think about it. Is that okay? Okay. We'll have staff go ahead and take a look to see whether, you know, what the effects have been with bans based on, like, calls for service and also, um, on views in different jurisdictions for, um, and to include, to include fire, law enforcement, and fire I am trying to make certain that we're getting the information that I anticipate getting the next day, so. Say that again? That, what, what I just said or what Gamble said? See, my fear is that we're going to bring back one bit of data that's going to lead to a, we've been going through a lot of that.
It's going to lead to what? I couldn't hear that.
Okay, so, all right, what I just described, is that what you're looking for, Jason?
I, I, what was the statement that you made? You're afraid you're going to bring back data and?
No, 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 back, back up. Um, I was, I was providing some detail for the, for the staff. You, you're, you're, you're looking for, you're looking for data on where there are bans and what?
Uh, well, I, I'll, I'll state it again, because we've studied this several times. So we actually already have the data, this isn't a poll. We can poll the existing reports that were done before. Um, we could duplicate that so that we could bring it up to date. What the ask was is that, what I haven't seen on this and been looking for, quite frankly, is, is there anything that, that, that pushes us and, and me in a direction where, hey, we should go this way from the point of safety or enforceability, that sort of thing? Everything that's been brought forward to this point that we've, that we've asked for has not showed that. It showed increased calls, increase, you know, all of that, it showed the opposite. Anywhere there was a ban, there was increased calls, there was a bigger issue, there was no enforcement. So it's like, we're punishing those that are abiding, but we're just letting those that just light them off. I mean, you're right, I mean, the big issue we have is, is the reservations and stuff, I don't disagree with you at all. But that's why I'm, I'm asking on that other one, where it's like, hey, if you, maybe there is a data point in there that shows that there's less fires in those areas and the reported intel that the state is providing for those that have bans, I'm just looking for anything that points to, hey, there's a solid reason why we should, from a data perspective, pursue that path. And that's why I asked for the advisory vote, because that would be one, if it came back and from my perspective, if a majority of the community said, hey, we're just not interested in this morning, we would prefer a public event, or, which we already have in the Evergreen Speedway, right? So that's what I was saying.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Walker?
I guess I don't, I don't need any more data to know that I'm in support of an advisory vote, so I'd be interested to hear from the other three that it sounds like would be in support of an advisory vote. Uh, Councilmember Scarborough.
So, and I wasn't looking for an option, but an option would be to provide direction for, for mayor and staff, um, to look into doing an advisory vote, vote on fireworks, then we can bring that back to you, um, make it maybe in the springtime, uh, like, we're going to bring it back to you sometime during the fall for discussion.
Yes, that's what I thought I heard, is that, that, or an advisory vote to, uh, maybe we're already aiming for it, as opposed to, yeah, a separate ballot, which we don't leave the November, January election in 2025, but we already settled, Councilmembers, on the ballot and we're paying for that.
Okay, so is, is there, is, is there a motion? So do we want to, you've got the floor, you figure out what you'd like to do.
I would love to direct staff to bring information back on an advisory vote for the general election of 2025.
Second.
On fireworks. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I have a motion from Councilmember Walker in a second for mayor and council, for providing direction to mayor and staff to bring back information on putting the issue of fireworks on the November 2025 ballot as an advisory vote. Does the maker of the motion agree with how I just summarized that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, does the second agree, Jason?
Yep.
Okay. Now we're going to move to discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote on, oh, wait, Jason, your hand is up, sorry.
That's fair, I, I raised it before the motions were made or anything.
Okay, all right. We're going to move forward with the motion, yes? You're good, Jason?
Yep.
Okay, cool. All right, all in favor?
My, my hand is up for once we take the vote, so.
Copy, understood. Okay, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? Okay, who voted against? Okay, motion passes five-two with Councilmembers Fisher and Foulter voting against. Motion passes five-two. All right, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
Yep. I just want to make sure and be clear, you know, from my perspective, I want the additional data. The advisory vote is just another data point. And I think one thing you got to consider, Councilmember Walker, is if, if it comes back 49, you know, 51 or 50/50, I mean, there's, that's just one additional data point. So from my perspective, when we're discussing this issue, we should have all of the data that we've produced before. I mean, in, in my opinion, and, and, you know, and make sure that we have it in the historical context, bring the stuff up to date. I mean, we've, we've discussed this so many times, we already know the things that we can get, um, that would just be useful.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
You were wondering if I was ever going to talk on this. Um, so if you're going to have an advisory vote on it, I think that the, um, the data point saying yes or no might fall under the pro or con committees, honestly. I don't see that that's, that seems to be a homework for a person who wants someone to vote one way or another.
Repeat that, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, when you have a pro and con committees on something on the ballot? You have to have a reason why you are trying to get someone to vote for something or against something. So having city staff hunt down another reason for our people to vote one way or another, that doesn't make sense to me. That seems to be, we put that work back on the, that homework needs to go back to the pro and con committees. When I had to write a pro statement for a certain levy, I had to do my homework. I had to have a reason to convince people. So if we're going to have an advisory vote, don't ask the city staff to do that. The pro and con committees need to do the work.
Thank you. So what we'll do then, because we're talking over a year from now, so we're talking about 14 months from now, is, uh, rather than bringing something back at the next meeting, I'll go ahead and, and work with staff and, and see about scheduling this at an appropriate time that could be a few months away, uh, as we've got a number of other things. The data also will need to be updated at some point in time, and, um, and so we're, we'll go ahead and be back and we'll put this back on an extended agenda at some point to discuss, uh, in more detail. Sound good, folks? All right, oh, Councilmember Gamble, sorry, you're on the little screen now, which is on the other side of the room. Go ahead.
Remind me, I think I know the answer to this. Result, we're not bound to the results of the advisory vote, correct?
It's an advisory vote, and my intent here would be to bring this back. Yeah, it, it's an advisory. Yeah, it, it's an advisory vote. What we would do, Jason, is bring this back for conversation at some point.
I, I heard all that. I just want to make sure it's clear that that's why we ask for the additional information. Because the advisory votes we took in the past, I mean, it's just an extra data point. But ultimately, the decision is with the city council. So the city council should be reviewing the data provided by staff. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, I misunderstood. Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay. We have no need for an executive session and there's nothing else from staff? All right, we are adjourned unless there's objection. Okay, we're adjourned. See y'all on Saturday.